All right. We will call to order this work session of the Board of Trustees for Friday, November 1st, 2019. And would the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Trustee Calvert. Trustee Cardill. President Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly. We aren't sure. He's absent at this point. Trustee Minneto.
Here.
I like saying that. Minneto. Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor. I'm here. And our student is where he should be, in class.
That's right.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Counsel, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, the special time. Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel. Ms. Batchelder, do we have public comment this morning?
I do not have any cards.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is action to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Motion by Vice President Raymond, second by Trustee Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I think you like to call Trustee Minneto because it rhymes with stiletto.
Thank you.
I just, I was just thinking about that-
Wow. I think-
From Friday morning. And I think it's really appropriate for her name to rhyme with stiletto. With the right. I think that's actually, thank you. That's why you're the president.
I get the big bucks.
You know.
That's right. All right. We will go to our business of the day, which is item 2.01. Washoe County School District Strategic Plan Discussion and Reporting of Metrics Related to the Following Goals and Possible Action to Provide Direction to Update or Revise Metrics as Needed. Goal one, to ensure annual student academic growth through a system of curriculum, instruction, and assessment that is aligned, rigorous, and relevant. Goal two, to develop and retain highly effective personnel who are driven to support- driven, not just want to, but we are driven to support students and their academic success as well as the success of the district. Goal three, to engage family, staff, trustees, and community members in strong relationships, provide meaningful opportunities to increase their educational expertise and trust, and to share responsibility for student success. Goal four, provide and continuously improve operational systems that are effective, efficient, transparent, and accountable by using meaningful structures and processes. And goal five, to ensure our schools are safe, secure, supportive, and welcoming environments where students and staff are able to succeed academically and professionally at the highest possible levels. Well done. Dr. McNeil, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, President Simon Holland. And I will turn on my mic here. Just to remind everyone, we are being livestreamed, so welcome, community, and the millions of people that are joining us today. We truly appreciate your interest here in our evaluation of our metrics today. Really, this is an opportunity. It's a health check. As many of us are going through our own, our own health checks, this is mine, right? But this is the health check for our school district today. And so we're very excited to share over 30 metrics throughout our day from goal one, goal two, goal three, goal four, and goal five. We will be going through our actuals and our targets. Ms. Russell will be recording the targets for 1920 as well, so they will be on the record. And we have designed this presentation today for our trustees so that they are, a very politically correct term would be chunked, so that they are for a smooth presentation and allow our presenters to be able to come together and then they, the staff will be leaving during the day. And our agenda item, just as a reminder, is for action to provide direction from the trustees to the interim superintendent if there were metrics that we wanted to take a look at, or if there are targets that we want to discuss. Now is the opportunity to do that. I would ask if you would please ask questions during the time that the presenters are up because, as I said, staff will be leaving during the day so that they won't be here during the whole time. So, once again, we are extremely excited and we will go ahead and we will move the slide deck forward. So this is just the overview, basically, of what I just talked about. We will have school year 16, 17 actual. A lot of those are our baseline data. We will then show you our school year 17, 18 actual. We will go into year 18, 19, last school year, showing you the target and the actual. And then again, once again, Vanjie will be taking notes so that they are on the record. All of the presenters will be sharing the 1920, this school year's target. And we are going to go ahead and start with, and just remember, when we're setting our strategic plan, we, this is actually two subsets of metrics. So we have the August presentation to you today as well as the October. We will then come back in April with other metrics that we're not going through today. So when you take a look at that number, 111, that is goal one with objective one and initiative one. So that's where you get the 111, just as a reminder. And we're going to start with our graduation rate.
Good morning, President Holland and interim super McNeil, Superintendent McNeil. For the record, Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer. We are, this is your academic leadership team, so Dr. Paul LaMarca on the end, Dr. Troy Parks, amazing Debbie Byersdorf, and again, Ben Hayes, for the record. We're all going to kind of chime in. I'm going to do a lot of the nerdery stuff, so with the numbers in the front, and then we're all kind of chime in on the initiatives going from there. So 1.1.1 graduation, as you, as a board, have said many times before, this is our North Star. We did have some success this year. We went up two percentage points preliminarily to 86 percent. Unfortunately, we, our target was 87, so we missed that. We still, there's a lot of highlights. Honors and advanced diplomas kept going up, so we haven't sacrificed rigor. Our population and our achievement gaps, we've had a lot of success there, continued success. And this is the first time we, when we talk about every child by name and face to graduation, we eclipse 4,000, by a large number this year. So it's, it was a great year, successful year. We didn't quite meet the target, and I'll hand it over to the rest of the team for challenges and activities in motion.
Ben, can I just jump in there? I know one of the things that we hear concerns about from, from principals, particularly of high schools, is that we have a number of students that are vanished, that are part of our graduation rate. And so while you're all presenting about this, I think it would be great to get on the record some of the challenges that we have with regard to transiancy and students that just, as one at Sparks High School, I know Kevin Carroll mentioned he had students that appeared for, I think, one day.
Yeah.
And they count in the enrollment. So if we could just touch on that as we go through, that'd be great.
Actually, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. M- we were just having a conversation about that exact thing, and he does a lot of work with foster and children in transition and vanished students in attendance, so I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, it's a really interesting and important point. You know, we've made tremendous progress in the school district over the last 10, 12 years with graduation rate. 12 years ago, don't quote me on it, could have been the wrong year, we were at about 55 percent. And at that time, vanished kids, that, that population was large and huge. And we spent a lot of effort building processes to really identify who these children are when they leave, search for them, get records from other schools, other districts, so that we could then take them off our cohorts. So it still is an issue, and it does plague schools, and you are right. If the child shows up one day and they become part of a cohort, and then they vanish and we cannot find them, locate them, they will remain on the cohort. But that number has gone from this to this.
Okay.
And it is still very challenging. I think the schools, you know, originally when we set out, schools were very focused around 12th grade, 11th grade, but the schools are really good now. As soon as a child is in their cohort, they begin that tracking process, hopefully to just support them towards graduation. But if, in fact, they leave, then to identify where they're at so that they're not, two years later, searching for them. But it is a real issue, and it can be difficult for our schools.
Do we know how many of those students or a percentage? I know you said it's, it's declining, but if we could just make note of that at some point, because it helps us in explaining to the public these numbers and what they mean and what the challenges are. Not, doesn't need to be right now, but at some point, if we could get some of that information about what that actual numbers are of vanished students.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll provide them, it's right around 4 percent of the cohort. And just for the, for the record, so everybody understands if they're streaming, vanished is different than dropout. Dropout, it is attached to a withdrawal code. The child comes in, or the parents come in and say, this child is dropping out of school, is not a fit right now. Vanished, they just leave our, our record. And like Paul said, our registrars and central office folks do a ton to kind of find out where, where the students have gone and make sure that they, even if we have to kind of reengage them just to get back to RISE and do a GED if they want to, and, but try to reengage them into our system.
Great, great. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Please, please continue.
I guess I can, I'll start and then I'll turn over to Dr. Parks and Ms. Byersdorf. I'll just talk about the first challenge very briefly because it's a challenge that you're going to see repeated. We have a dedicated initiative around achievement gaps. You're going to see another one around disproportionality. So we continue to see disparities in graduation rate along racial lines, other student groups, and that's a, that's a challenge for us that we constantly have to, to address.
Trustee Calvert.
So, Dr. LaMarca, what are the challenges? I mean, and how do you feel that you can address those or?
The challenges are, wow. Thank you for the question, actually. And before you walked in, there was all this political stuff on TV, so we can talk about the nation as a whole. No, I really think that, so what we're doing to address the challenges, you've all worked with and heard from Tiffany Young and our Equity and Diversity Group. We've got multiple initiatives going around where we're, you know, one of our four fundamentals in past years was inclusive environments. There's lots of research around implicit bias. There's lots of research around, you know, differential access, and that begins really at birth. It's, but it pervades through our system. So we are doing everything we can, pre-K, through primary, through intermediate, through middle school, through high school, to get behind this, and catching up is taking time. It's taken 30, 40 years to be as bad as, you know, it's gotten, and it's going to take a long time until we see all those bars, you know, equal with all kids graduating at 90-plus percent. But that's sort of the generic general challenge we have.
Dr. McNeil.
I'm just going to add just a little bit to what Dr. LaMarca was stating, and it's not necessarily just around race as well. We know that we have achievement gaps within student populations as far as children in transition, high poverty outcomes, as well as students with IEPs, Individual Education Plans, as well. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. So unless there are any further questions on 1.1.1, we'll move on.
And the target?
The target for next year, would we, we're going to stick pretty similar throughout our metrics this year, would be a two percentage point increase. So the target for next year would be 88. We're still kind of, we have schools and systems engineered to trying to get to 90 percent, but the target for the strategic plan will be 86. I mean, 88, I apologize.
88, okay. And, which is different from the 90 by 20 that has been out there.
Well, the goal of the strategic plan, yes.
Yeah. We haven't given up on it. That's just the written target, but-
Okay.
We have some, oh, Dr. Parks.
Thank you. Good morning, President Simon Holland, interim Superintendent McNeil, and board. For the record, Troy Parks. What I'd like to add here is, it would go without saying, but I'm going to say it. Our principals and our counselors and our teachers at our high schools are doing an exceptional job of knowing every student, making sure that every student is, to the best of their knowledge, on track. When we go visit and we sit with the counselors and the team, they can guide us, student by student by student, and they, the challenges that Dr. LaMarca mentioned, they can tell you exactly where those kids are, where they're coming from. And I just really want us all to acknowledge where the work gets done. And as Ben said, we, we've seen tremendous gains. We're not there yet, but our schools, teachers, counselors, principals are, are doing excellent work.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. And we don't want that to go unsaid because we do know the amazing effort, and I know all of the trustees have taken part in participation, participating with high schools, hearing about what goes on, pre-K, all the way through, to make sure that our kids know that we are all, as a community and as a district, here for them to make sure that they cross that finish line. And we know tremendous work is being done. So thank you. Thank you to everybody.
My Nike pace setter app is telling us we're behind, so we'll move on to the next one. So 1.1.2 is ELA.
Snap down.
This is ELA, so Smarter Balance Assessment, grades three through eight, and this is English Language Arts and Reading. The target for us was 49 percent. Last year, we were at 48 percent, so we had a one percentage point increase. We met the target. And then next year will be a 51 percent target. We're asking the board for a 51 percent target. And I'll hand it over to Dr., Ms. Byersdorf.
Doctor, huh? I like that. Yeah. Good, good morning, everyone. Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer. So I, sometimes we see things that pop up on highlights and challenges as well, so I wanted to call your attention to our first bullet there under highlights, the recent adoption of a K5 outstanding, high-quality curriculum that is now in place in our schools. It's also a challenge as well because it's a large scale of hundreds of teachers and professional learning needs and ensuring that we are rolling out the curriculum with consistent language and consistent support for our teachers. So just thought that would be something interesting to point out. Also wanted to point out the third bullet under highlights as well. We have a very robust and high-quality intervention program at our elementary schools. Leveled Literacy Intervention is what LLI stands for. And that has been in place in our schools now for several years, kind of as a result of the initial read-by-grade-three legislation, and we're continuing to provide training and support in that as well. Under Strategic Activities in Motion, I wanted to point out bullet number two. You, you heard from myself and Robert Sidford and Tara Graves at your meeting on Tuesday about our digital learning curriculum. We are working hard, that is one of the, the areas of the digital curriculum, that we're working hard to finish up by January 6th. That's because we have teams of teachers that are working together at each grade level to ensure that pacing guides and supplementary materials are all aligned that will eventually go into the program that we shared with you on Tuesday. And then I wanted to also point out the third bullet. You're going to actually be seeing this one in several of the slides that the academic leadership team will present, and that's the focus on professional learning communities. So our area superintendents are working super hard through their vertical meetings. We also bring information and training to our Lead Teach Learn, our LTL, meetings. But we also have district leader engagement around PLC work that's driven in part by Dr. Sandra Eard, who works with Ben in his office. That PLCs need to be about ongoing improvement, that Plan Do Study Act model, but that's definitely in place for our work with our ELA outcomes, is that what are we learning? Not just from the adoption that we've just put in place, that's actually, we're going to spend several years learning from that, but the needs of our students, and then how we help our teachers get better at scaffolding for our kids, whether they're EL, our English learners, our gifted and talented, regular education, classrooms, self-contained, special ed classrooms. So wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'm sorry, the 1920 you said was what?
51.
51.
And one of the things that's helpful to me, just listening to this and, and being
a better board member, is putting that in context. You know, how does that compare to state averages and national averages? So as we go through the day, if, because that helps us to know, how are we doing in comparison to other people? So as we go through the day, any of that information that you all can share with us, I think, would be helpful. Vice President Raymond.
I was just, if you could remind me, it's 51 percent that would be-
It would be, the target for next year would be 51 percent proficient, meeting standard, so level three or four on Smarter Balance.
Sback, okay.
Yeah, so, and grades three through eight. And real quickly, I'll say on this one, our, if you look at, and this is grade three through eight as a whole, this number is above the state average and probably falls lower half, but not, not the very bottom of kind of consortiums, Sback Consortium states.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Dr. Parks.
Again, I'd like to add two things. I want to talk a little bit about Benchmark and then the professional learning communities. We, as area superintendents, have been out monitoring the implementation of Benchmark. It is specific a look for as we visit our elementary school classrooms, and to a T, we are all seeing very consistent implementation of that, that core curriculum. And Debbie's department has been extremely responsive to our schools when there is concern and questions. In all of our schools right now, there is ongoing training in helping with the implementation phase of Benchmark. And we're, we're in that, whoa, we've got a new reading language arts curriculum-
Yeah.
And this is so different. So I'm really hopeful that it's going to be much better aligned to the expectations of Common Core. And it's going hand in hand with our professional learning communities. I want to remind everyone that this was an inside-out change, that it was our principals that were coming to us and saying, we, we got to get back to our core focus of student learning. So to expand on that, professional learning communities, we're really excited about where the PLC design team is. That's a team of central office, principals, department leaders, who we are working towards, and this is an organizational-wide philosophy, that we can continuously improve and get better. So to add to Debbie's comments, we're, we are seriously looking at, how do we know that the kids learned?
Yeah.
Because we've done a really good job in the past about providing teachers feedback about their methodology and their strategies. But as we've been really diving deep into professional learning communities, we're pushing the shift that really, the learning and the proof that you have of evidence for students' learning is more important than those strategies you might have as a teacher. So I really wanted to emphasize that because I believe that is, that's coming from our principals and our schools, and you're going to see more and more talk about student learning.
Okay. Thank you. At the risk of getting the ire of Mr. Hayes, I wanted to just-
[laughing]
I just, I just wanted to note that I, I was reading something the other day that, and I can't remember what the source was, but that in early grades, we're seeing improvements in performance, but then it's declining as we get into middle school. And I wonder if that's true, is that true for our district as well? One of the, the suppositions that was posed by the article I was reading is that during the recession, when we, you know, we had shortages of funds pulled back on resources, not just this district, but nationwide, that those kids who are now in the eighth grade suffered from that contraction of resources. And I just wanted to see if that's true for us. I, I believe that it was the last time I looked at these scores, that our kids are doing better in early grades and then they fall off into middle school.
And I don't have specific, you know, numbers, President Simon Holland, but I, I've talked before, you all before, and about the importance of high-quality materials that are aligned to Nevada Academic Content Standards, and was probably remiss in adding another bullet under the challenges slide up there, that we've done a recent adoption of K5. Our materials at grades six, seven, and eight are not as old as our science materials, but they're not, they're not too much, too much newer than that. And, you know, we, as Troy was talking about, you know, our PLCs, our professional learning structure, PLC structure, our teachers do a huge lift, and our, and our principals do as well, working with what they're able to, to get, and, and the support that they get from various departments. I wouldn't attribute it all to lack of that, but I think that's a, that's a big, it's a big challenge because we did go through many years without being able to, or choosing not to perhaps do that. So, you know, in those adoption cycles, but, but we're back, we're getting back on track, and we're excited for that.
Great. Thank you.
Ben Hayes, for the record. So I think that's a really interesting question. Yes, the pattern that you've seen holds, it gets percent, as far as students meeting proficiency, it gets lower as you approach eighth grade. The really interesting thing to me about that is against, in context, or relatively, against the consortium and against the, the rest of the state, we start a little bit lower in terms of proficiency in third grade, and then we kind of catch up and pass the rest of the state and some of the consortium by the end of eighth grade. And it kind of fits with, and I, I don't want to kind of keep bringing this article out year after year, but that Stanford study in the New York Times article that said, between grades three and eight, Washoe is kind of in the top 82rd percentile. But you're right, it does go from roughly kind of low, upper 40s in, down to upper 30s by the time you get to eighth grade, especially in math, it's more market. And this is one thing that Dr. McNeil and a whole bunch of central office folks and high school principals have been talking about lately, is once the pathway gets into high school, if we're talking about students 37 percent proficient and larger class sizes and a lot of students taking algebra that aren't quite ready for the material, it's something that we are, have been talking about redesigning the lower pathway, getting better supports into place so that we can get that at least, and we have a metric today that's ready for high school by the end of eighth grade. So it's something that we're paying attention to and, and kind of demand some supports.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Minneto.
Because of the new ELA adoption, is two points higher too aggressive, or is that just perfect?
Again, Deborah Byersdorf, there's definitely that theory out there of the implementation dip when you implement something new. You know, we talked about this one and, and struggled a bit, but we're working hard and, and we don't, we don't put all our eggs in the intervention basket, but I think we're doing really well with the intervention programs that are in place at our schools. I think we're doing much better. Again, you'll hear us, I think, talk a lot about PLC, using data to drive decisions about student instruction. So I'm, I'm confident, you know, putting that at 2 percent, but that's definitely in the back of my mind that we are implementing this. It, it is new. It's new and it's different, and it's, and it's, it's difficult and it's messy right now, but it's good work. And it's going to take us some time. I mean, just, you know, reading some of the research, you know, three years for an implementation of a new literacy arts curriculum at the elementary level, so. But that, that would be our recommendation.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so we'll transition to 1.1.2 math. And again, this is Smarter Balance, the Sback Assessment, grades three through eight, the percentage of students meeting standard. So our performance, the previous year was 41 percent. We had a target of 42 percent, and our actual was at 40 percent. So we went down, we did not meet the target, we went down one percentage point. We would ask that the target for next year be a two percentage point increase, so 42 percent as a target again. And I will, I'll hand it over real quick. I do want to kind of point out probably the second bullet under highlights, and Dr. Parks will speak a little bit more to this, hopefully. But it says, implementation of PLC support of interim assessment. So to Trustee Minneto's question earlier, I do think, and to thi, and, and this is why I believe that we can get to two percentage points. PLCs and what Dr. Parks was saying, that the principals want to get back to student learning, want to get back to grade-level standards and making sure we're exposing our students to grade-level standards and grade-level material. This is kind of a check on that and a, kind of a, a move back toward assessment literacy, like smaller assessments, and let's have a conversation about the data based on the standards and based out on how students are responding to that assessment and to those standards. So I think, and again, Dr. Parks can speak more to it, this is something that he and Dr. Eard are kind of implementing- Dr. Eard are kind of implementing together in the schools. And again, it's, I think, more than anything, exposure to the standards, making sure we're giving our kids a chance to meet grade-level standards and to excel on grade-level standards.
Thank you, Ben. Again, for the record, Troy Parks, ARI superintendent. We are really excited to see the outcomes this year. As Ben said, under Dr. Eard's leadership, we are having math formative assessments. And just to be very clear, those are much shorter learning cycles where we are beginning with the end in mind, so to speak, and teaching in smaller units. And then we, we know, because we've involved Dr. Eard's department, that we have well-aligned formative assessments to grade-level or S-Back expectations. And so what our teachers are doing, because we have set this up with central office support to assure, is that when they're looking at that data of student learning outcomes, they are actually asking themselves, what do we do now? For the kids who didn't learn it, what is going to be the intervention? For the kids who did, what are the next steps? And for those kids who really nailed it and who clearly understand, how are we going to enrich their learning simultaneously, you know, looking at what was learned and continuing to move through the curriculum? And so this is our, our first year headed down that road. We have 14 schools participating. And yes, we are still in that implementation growth period where anytime you implement something, you, you gotta do the best planning that you can, but you are going to have holes in your plan. So, but I'm really excited about, again, through the, the leadership of Dr. Eard, that opportunity. We are looking at, and this will be a conversation in December, January, of what is the next model of formative assessment that we put in? And, and as Debbie mentioned before, that's really just to have a plan-do-study-act cycle where we are continuously asking ourselves, are our students learning the essential learning that should be happening in math, in reading, in science? And so we're really excited, to say the least, about to see where we, we end up this year.
Okay, great. All right. Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you. So this is, this is the metric that I struggle with the most. I know I've heard a lot about, the term is new math, the different, the different way math is being done than maybe when I was in school, and that the process is complicated. And a lot of times the kids don't catch on to that process of completing a problem, they don't know how to do it, and that just kind of builds over time. And for what I've seen, the students that are doing this new math are struggling and are transitioning to college, because faculty at the university level are not doing it that way. And even the Math 95 courses, they do not know what's going on in their math classes. Have we, have we seen a dip in our scores since that was kind of implemented? Is it worth looking at a different, a different way? Because this, this number is what I struggle with. I know I hear about in the community that 40%, so 60% is not proficient. Is there a better way to do this, to help prepare our kids, to ensure they're getting the math skills they need to go on, not just be in college, but to have their skills as they go in the workforce?
Super quickly, again, Deborah Byersdorf. So I, I don't want to forget to mention that we work very closely with Trucky Meadows Community College and, as well as the university. When we think about that transition and what kids are expected to know and be able to do when they graduate, and then when they go on to higher education, and there definitely is a disconnect. And I think both the community college and the university recognize that and own that as well. So I meet regularly with Dr. Margolo from the community college and Dr. Shantani from the university as well. As a matter of fact, in a recent meeting, Dr. McNeil was at as well. We talked about, we've got to get our high school instructors, our math instructors, our math department leaders, actually together with the instructors, the professors at the higher ed level, to talk about where, where is that, that disconnect? I also think too, with the adoption, not so recent now, but the adoption of the Nevada Academic Content Standards, NVACs, those students are moving through the system, and they are now in those early years of high school. And while this metric measures K-8, S-Back, and you'll see more information later, specific to high school, there's also a lot of work that we need to be doing with teaching our teachers how, how math is done differently. And I often think when people talk about new math, because I hear that as well, how kids are being taught, there's just, it's like a, almost a re, a rewiring of how we teach math in a, in a very simple explanation. We were taught to count one, two, three. Kids now are taught one, two, three, four, to be thinking of math in, in, in a, in a different way. There's a lot more reading involved, there's a lot more, what's the word I'm looking for? Yes, involved in, in, in math and math instruction, that we've got to spend a lot of time with our teachers and, and teaching them up as well. So just because you put a new curriculum in somebody's hand, doesn't mean they're getting it just like that and, and they know maybe the best way to teach it. On the left-hand side of this slide, we talk about Tier One. In Tier One, we, we often think about how we instruct in a pyramid. And the majority of our students should be at the base of that period, pyramid, Tier One, that we're, we're teaching, we're aligning to standards, we're looking at data, we're coming back and doing quick interventions, because teachers are making decisions very quickly based on what students are doing or not doing. Then as we move up the pyramid, that's when we start to get into our interventions. I think specifically with math, and, and this metric is, is troublesome to me as well, that there has been, and I understand it, but there's maybe been a, going to interventions more quickly than we should. So I think our work through PLCs, I think the digital curriculum will help address that. And I think the ongoing, you know, and that challenge is, there's a couple of bullets that speak to supporting our teachers. We, we just need to get more supports out there to, to help our teachers as well. Also too, we lack, that's the second, sorry, excuse me, the third bullet on the right-hand side, intervention, consistent intervention materials across especially the elementary level and as a system. We, we're working on that now to try to find something that will work for students similar to the LLI that I talked about under the ELA metric. So yeah, the, this one is, kids do well in math, reading as well, obviously, but that trajectory to on-time graduation with an honors diploma or a college and career diploma, and then on to higher education and not having to take those remedial courses, huge. So I hope that answers some of what's in, in our heads right now.
I'll just go real quickly, or add real quickly that we don't have a measure of kind of pre-C common or Nevada academic, the change in standards, because those tests change at the same exact time, and it's a much, much different test. I will say kind of as evidence over the last 10 years, NAEP, NAEP scores in Nevada have gone up a little bit, and that kind of the idea behind these, the new math, I think, in, is conceptual, better conceptual and better ways to approach a math problem for students, so that hopefully they do better once they get to higher ed. One of my favorite things, and I said, I go quickly, but I just got to tell this part. One of my favorite things when I'm at schools is to, and I'll shout out to Mr. Grossman right now, is watching number talks or watching students, third graders, approach a problem and kind of explain to the class how they're solving that problem, what their strategies they're choosing. So I, there's nothing, or I don't have any empirical evidence yet, but my hope is that they're, they're better equipped for college math when they get there.
Dr. McNeil?
And I'll just add real quickly, when you, we're starting to see a trend with these next, you know, with these three metrics, as far as with English Language Arts, math, and the next one, science, this is what we're talking about as far as we need to come back to our pathway and take a look from pre-K to that 10th grade, there are some spots that we are missing, and we're starting to see what the, what the issues have been as far as, I don't want to say quite, put it that critical that we're ignoring it, but we need to start looking at refocusing our efforts around these strategic targets along the pathway. You know, graduation is, is always going to be our North Star, but what we're starting to see is the impetus as, as far as that focus effort. And so we need to really start focusing, putting resources into this. And for the math particularly, you know, when you're going into a second-grade classroom and you're, and you're seeing kids engaged in conversations around data, it's different than what we were used to in the classroom. It's not just pencil and paper anymore, it's that engagement, it's the critical thinking which actually will help when they start to talk about algebra and the missing factors and critical thinking skills as well, so.
And I think it's also a challenge for parents, and I, I hear the same thing, Trustee Cottrell, that our parents don't understand how, how to support their student in this learning. So the more we can do for family information nights about, you know, how to help your child with math, the better it will be.
Could I just comment super quickly about that?
Yes, absolutely.
President Simon Holland, yes, absolutely agree. And our website has a lot of great information for parents as well, under the Curriculum and Instruction, and then the Math tab, to help with that as well. And we're constantly updating that and sharing with our families.
And I know one of the things Mr. Grossman does, I, you mentioned Aaron Grossman, he has a brown bag lunch for parents to come in every so often, and parents of his students take advantage of that to come in, and they are able to work through some problems and get a lot of information. It's, I know it's a lot more work for a teacher, but it's really, really helps those students. So, thank you. Okay. Blazing ahead, 45 minutes in, and we've gotten three of those points done.
They're very important, though.
Breakneck speed.
This is, this is my troublesome metric.
Yeah.
So this is science.
Yeah.
And previous year, in 1718, we were 36. We set the target at 37%. We went down one percentage point, so we missed the target, and we are sitting at 35%. And so we would ask that the target be 37% next year, a two percentage point increase. And again, this is the science assessment, the Nevada State Science Assessment. It's given in grades five and grade eight. And as I said, and, and Dr. McNeil already said this, and I know Debbie has a lot to say about materials, so I'll hand it over, but this is when we talk about the future of, when we'd say children are our future, this is why it's a troublesome metric there. The future of our area and the next century, science is, I think we'd all agree, going to be incredibly important, so as soon as we can get our materials in front of our students.
Thanks, thanks, Ben. Again, Deborah Byersdorf. So the third bullet on the right-hand side challenges, this is an interesting one, and this is, this is true across all 17 districts in the state. The assessment and NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards, and the assessment that Ben talked about, don't align real well, which is kind of an oddity in my opinion. But there are folks that are working really hard, and we do have, Washoe does have good representation on that particular task force that's being facilitated by the Nevada Department of Education. Northwest RPDP, Regional Professional Development Program, still continues to provide us a lot of support, both in training and financial support in the FOS kits. We are still with a plan moving forward that our next adoption will be K-5 science materials. We'll look to kind of start that process early spring 2020, so toward the end of the school year. This particular adoption will be a really interesting one, and it will be different because it will be the first time that we will, as a district, be under new state NRS around the adoption of materials, where Nevada Department of Education has put together a team, and we're represented on that as well, to select the initial list of Nevada Academic Content Standards line material. And then as a district, we would go through a process to, to choose, or to make a recommendation to you all about what science materials we would be looking to adopt. So that'll, we're looking forward to that, that'll be an interesting process, I'm sure. I wanted to point out maybe the third bullet under strategic activities, the STEM-related initiatives. Don't forget Punkin Chunkin' in the morning, that is a STEM showcase. But also too, you'll remember the pretty cool presentation that came before you a few months ago about robotics, you know, funded in part by Tesla. There's a lot of these initiatives out there, science initiatives. We also have what we call an instructional minutes document that outlines for our elementary schools, the amount of minutes that need to be spent in teaching throughout the week, the course of a school week, English Language Arts, math, science, and social studies, the four core areas. But we also do a lot of work that they're not standalone, all right? Put your math materials away, it's now time to do science. We, we, we try not to do that, so that it's integrated, so that our kids see where the, the connections are as well. They love science, you know that, that's the hook for students, so we're working hard with what we've got to, to move this one forward. And it's a concerning metric for me as well, because, you know, for, for so many reasons. So I don't know, maybe if Troy wants to jump in there with anything.
Thank you, Deb. For the record, Troy Parks, I would just add the obvious, in building on those three key metrics, the, the reading, the math, and science, none of them at a district level are acceptable and make us go, wow, look how well we're doing. And I, I, again, the professional learning communities, we will be specifically with reading, math, and science, the plan, to be clear, over these next three years, is is that we will be focusing on student learning and asking teachers to clarify what is absolutely essential for those reading language and science, reading language arts, math and science. And then that next step, how do you know that the students learned it? And we often get mired down in the amount of standards that we're expected to teach. And as educators, when you're in a classroom, it's very easy to get caught up in what's on the next page, what's the next standard, keep moving. And this focus on professional learning communities, as a district, and, and I'm going to keep tooting this horn, we need to ask ourselves, are the kids learning? And if they're not, what are we as the educators going to do? And what do we do with the ones that did learn? And what do we do to enrich those that didn't? And you can't do that for every standard. You've got to decide as a professional educator, as a team, that's what we're going to ask them to collaborate around, what is essential?
Trustee Cottrell?
Thank you. So overall, it sounds like for English Language Arts and Science, once the new curriculum is in place and rolling, we feel pretty good, we'll start to get things caught up, because the old curriculum was so far behind. And in math, it's interventions as the kids go through school to ensure they're learning the material. Is that kind of like a summary of what we're hoping for in the next few years?
So again, Deborah Byersdorf, yes, a Trustee Cottrell, I would say very much so. And it's not as much as I think we all believe in high-quality materials that are up to date, that are aligned to assessments, aligned to standards, is a huge step forward. It's the people part of it as well, it's the professional learning, it's the continual support of our teachers. I'm just going to put it out there, sometimes my, my heart breaks when, you know, when we have to look at reducing professional learning or the support to our teachers because of, you know, budget constraints and things like that, because those are the things that move us forward as well. And I know sometimes it's hard to make the link between a professional learning event, having a, a direct link to a, a student outcome or that. But, you know, we have amazing teachers that are, are working hard, and we just got to continue to support them. We're looking at different ways to support, not just bringing folks together, but blended learning, online learning, the digital curriculum, I think will go a long way to help with that as well. But a long way to say yes, I would agree with your statement.
I appreciate that. One thing, last thing I'll add is I, I think as we see this new curric, new curriculum and on these other things getting adjusted, and we see these scores tick up, the byproduct will be the ACT will improve. Because these are all the things on the ACT, math, English reading, and science, and the ACT isn't something that you just miraculously prepare for in a month course before it. It's a buildup of everything that's happened. It's a buildup of everything that's happened up to that point in a student's education. So as we see the proficiencies increase, the ACT will go up. And I think that's what we'll, a byproduct we'll see, it's going to take some time, but I ultimately believe that that is where we'll head, we'll be going, and when we get that, these other things corrected.
Good, good. Just as a, as a side note to that, too, it, I know you all know that the science, the delay in adopting science standards has been something that bothered me a lot, and I want to understand, do we have a board policy about regular reevaluation of curriculum? Because we can't let it go this long, and we need to, even when all of us aren't here, we need to make sure that there are things in place that, that don't allow the boards to cut budgets that leave us in this situation. I mean, how long has it been since science, what was the year, was it like two thousand six, I think?
I believe it was two thousand three, because I'm thinking it was sixteen years.
Sixteen years. So I would just put that on a to-do list. If we don't have that in board policy, that we might want to consider some kind of systematic, we do have it, great, and we're not observing it.
We do have an adoption cycle for our curriculum, but, you know, I mean, it is, it is.
It's budget dependent.
It is budget dependent, and we've been in these, in these crisis modes for the last few years as far as, you know, MUR and all that kind of good stuff. That's where this, this comes into play.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to take care of it, because when we're talking about literacy and math and science, those are the three key indicators.
That's right.
And I was talking about the health of a district.
Yeah.
And I will keep emphasizing, as, as our academic team has professional learning communities, we have to make sure that our teachers are receiving that professional development support, and we've, and we've unfortunately had to come back from that over the years because of resource constraints.
Well, I'd, I'd like to have the discussion at a policy level at some point, how we can provide more rigor at our level to discourage cannibalizing things that are so critical to our student achievement. Okay. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to the academic leadership team, I mean, this is, I think it's really important for us. I mean, this has helped me make a better connection between the two, if you will, and I think it's really important, not just for us as a board, as President Simon Holland is talking about, as well as the interim superintendent, but really for the community to understand, there's, there's a balance between those desires of ours to balance a budget, which is critically important, but the impact that that potentially has on the preparation of our students, because our teachers aren't quite as prepared, because we haven't provided the supports that they need. We forget sometimes, I think it's easy, especially in the community, because this has helped me see even a better connection, right? To see that the connection between the two, it's really easy to say, oh, let's just cut professional development. No, they don't need to go to the conference, they don't need to. But then, when you make that connection to, you know, but like since this week, the ACT scores came out, I'm really glad you kind of drew that line, Trustee Cottle, there is a connection between the two, and it's a very difficult balance. So it's, it's easy to wave the banner, let's cut the budget, let's cut the budget, let's cut the budget, and then we can't wait until then, hey, but our scores are down, the scores are down, it's like, it's... And so I think it's really important for, as you continue to make this clear for us as board members, that the community recognizes that as well. We can't get both. And at the end of the day, you know, our responsibility is educate those kids and help them be prepared for whatever their next step may be, college, career, military, whatever they want to do. And, you know, they've, they've been done a disservice in a lot of ways, I think, and our, I mean, and I'm thinking this to myself, is, man, our zeal and excitement about, hey, let's pull this budget back, which is, which is important, because we need to be fiscally responsible, but we have to consider, what does that mean on this other end, and, and the difficult challenge between the two? So that was probably just you, me sharing out loud what was going on in my mind, so. No question, just, you know, wanted to share.
Okay.
For the, for the throngs that are streaming live.
Exactly.
There'll be some tweets about that, I'm sure.
Right.
Be watching, Irene.
Thank you. Let's keep going. Throngs, throngs.
Okay, so this one, well, we're heading up the pathway now. This is the College and Career Ready Diploma. So this one, I think, will take a while, but I think it's a very important one, we all do. This is where we want to kind of engineer our pathway towards, so either college or career-ready diploma. And this is the, the new diploma that was adopted by the state and legislature. So the reason for this particular metric is because we wanted a, a college-going or college readiness metric, and the N-C remediation rate metric, as you remember, we talked about several times, it was a bit lagged, two or three years behind, so it never worked. This is more real-time. So this, what will present are numbers around students receiving the college and career-ready diploma and endorsement. And it's kind of confusing, so when you see that first square that says two thirty-three, a number of grads earning college-ready diploma, that's, it's misleading. There were certainly two hundred and thirty-three students who earned that diploma, but they're also a bunch of students that earn an honors or advanced diploma with the seal. So it's not just the CCR diploma, the honors is a little bit more rigorous than the CCR requirements, they're more aligned with the advanced diploma. So we provided these numbers here, but unfortunately, I didn't get to, I was playing around with it, because I was confused myself a little bit. Last night Debbie and I were kind of working back and forth on, on some numbers. So these numbers are true, there's two hundred and thirty-three students that earned a CCR diploma, and there were a thousand thirty-one student of grads earning honors plus CCR endorsement. And then there were thirty-one receiving advanced plus a CCR endorsement. And then if you keep going over, there's a total grads that was twelve sixty-three. Now that included some standards and adult diplomas, which, and she says, if you're college-ready, you have to have above a standard diploma, advanced or honors. So that includes some duplicate numbers. And then the seven fifty-two was career readiness endorsement, and then that three eighty-seven number is the number of grads that earned both, both endorsements. And there's some duplicates in there. So that's why I put together, and I'll put it into the record, or at least make sure we put it in the superintendent highlights. So there's, you have to have an advanced or an honors or a CCR diploma to be considered college-ready, plus an endorsement, which implies that you've scored high enough on the ACT or SAT for the college readiness diploma, and scored high enough on the ASVAB or the NCRC and/or CTE completer for the career-ready diploma. So there's some requirements. So those numbers, and I'll go with just college-ready, because this metric was intended to replace the N-C ready. So the numbers that I'll give you right now are students who, number one, got an advanced honors or CCR diploma, plus got an endorsement, which meant they scored high enough on the ACT or SAT to not have to take remedial ed. And that number is one thousand one hundred and twenty-four of our graduates. And again, I'll send this and try to get it into the record somehow. So that would be the baseline number, is one thousand one hundred and twenty-four, and we would ask for a target of a five percent increase, which would put the target at one thousand one hundred and eighty college-ready diploma and endorsements. So kids that are truly ready for college. That works out to, remember earlier I said we had four thousand sixty-four graduates? That works out to about twenty-seven percent of our students getting this diploma, which is a little bit too low, I think we'd all agree, but much higher than the ninety, or the ten percent that has been bandied about.
That's incorrect.
So, so again, Deborah Byersdorf, just a couple things maybe to point out as well. So the honors diploma, of course, is specific, unique to Washoe County School District. The advanced diploma is a state-awarded diploma, and the idea is that that will phase out in favor of the new college and career-ready diploma as well. So the CCR diploma right now requires four years of math, standard diploma is three, and also requires three years of science, a standard diploma right now is two years. So it is, it's interesting how everything connects, so going back to ACT, going back to thinking about remediation at the higher ed level. So the first bullet under highlights, so coming into this past school year, last summer, the Nevada Department of Education had made a promise that schools, and this money goes directly to the high schools, would earn or be granted two hundred dollars per each student who received this diploma with one of the endorsements. And all told, a little over two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars went to our schools. That was a fun email to send out, and their next question was, well, what do we have to do? And there wasn't any specific guidance from Nevada Department of Education, but the expectation is, is that you're using that money to reinvest in those programs at your site that help students get to the college and career-ready diploma. So maybe it's science materials for labs and things like that, maybe it's some extra help for career CTE, oh my gosh, CTE just went out of my head, career tech ed, sorry, excuse me, programming, how could I forget that? Punkin Chunkin' tomorrow, don't forget about that. Oh, my goodness. So, so that was, that was, that was pretty cool. So also could be used to help with proctoring exams, like for advanced placement, international baccalaureate, et cetera. So that was a nice boon for our schools. So it's, it's confusing, and we have to, I'll speak for myself, have to stop and think about all the endorsements in that. So it can be confusing at the school site as well for our counselors and for our registrars. So I included another bullet there, that second one under highlights about district departments collaborating, because initially, when this diploma first rolled out, there wasn't really any way to quickly determine students that would be on the pathway, not just your seniors ready to graduate, but your freshmen and your sophomores, as they start to earn their credits. So wanted to give a, a big shout out to our student accounting department, our counseling department, our career tech ed department, our curriculum and instruction department, information technology, worked really closely, other folks in Ben's department as well, worked closely together to come up for an, to come up with an easy way that we could put into Infinite Campus, and I think talked with BIG as well, to quickly, to help schools quickly identify those students, so conversations could happen with the students and their families. Hey, did you know, you're on the path, if you take one more of this course, or you go for a completer status for career technical education, you can, you can earn this diploma, which is a pretty cool thing for kids to be able to take, whether it's higher education or career or military as a next step. Challenges, ACT, we actually had a leadership team meeting yesterday, and Ben presented to us about the recently released information about ACT performance, and some things not only the state can do better, but Washoe can do better as well in helping students move through that exam. Accommodations, for example, I know Dr. McNeil's been very involved in that work. Core credit attainment, we'll, we'll hear about that just shortly. So ongoing challenges, and then also just continuing to communicate what does, why is this such a great diploma to get, what's so important about it?
Okay, yes, Vice President Raymond.
I see under the activities in motion, talking about the communication, and just wondering, you know, and hearing you speak about those challenges, but to me, it almost feels like too, that we should be having the conversation with families in middle school, so that, you know, you're, you're starting high school already knowing what, that that's the goal in mind for your student or as a student for yourself. And I don't know, you know, I know it's hard to, as a parent, sort of think about that, you know, in the moment, but I, and I don't know what the appropriate timing is to have the conversation, but I think that is, to me, a logical, and maybe you're already doing it that way. And then I'm just wondering, and maybe it's in a highlights email sometime down the road, but, and maybe I've seen this, but can we see a breakout by school of those diplomas? Because I'm also wondering, you know, if you're, if you're the child of college graduates, this is, this is, this makes sense and why you do this. And I know that it can, is useful to more than just college-bound students, but I think in particular, there's a motivation if you're college-bound to get that diploma. But in our schools, you know, with populations that don't have as many families with college degrees, I'm just wondering, are we using JAG and AVID and, what's the one at the university that?
Dean's Future Scholars, Europe.
All of those to help with that messaging, too, about why, why, why this is important and starting in that freshman year. That was a lot, sorry, I just said, and I don't really have a major question other than that, if we could get the breakout by school at some point. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll just take two seconds to say, the, the point about communicating, so in BIG, and Debbie alluded to this a little bit, we have built it, so we have a student kind of profile page of where they are on the track to these diplomas and kind of what class, and we are trying to get that. But I think the point of around middle school is a really good one, and it's, I don't know if you remember Dr. McNeil talking a lot about Portrait of a Graduate or our promise to the community. Eventually, I think, we'll, we'll hope that the board gets back to that work for a strategic plan, and kind of what we want the pathway to look, look at, look like, and how we communicate the child's progress along that pathway the whole time. Okay, this is all yours.
Thank you, Ben. So again, Deborah Byersdorf, so this is our metric that follows how our graduating students are doing in completer status for career and technical education programming. We had set a target of twenty-three percent for last school year, and we actually came in at twenty percent. So a bit disappointing, though, I would say that that's, we're on, definitely on the right path, because we're getting the word out about how important completer status is for career and technical education. But my proposal is to go back to the eighteen, nineteen target, and again, strive for twenty-three percent at the end of this, the current school year. I've brought before, to you before, some of these highlights, for example, the Nevada Department of Education, we work very closely with them, obviously, is setting a goal of eleven thousand completers statewide by the end of this school year. That means fifteen hundred and fifty students in Washoe County, but you'll see at the, I did put it in as a highlight, but you'll see the second highlight there is that we had eight hundred and thirty students. So, so it's, it's, it's going to take a lot of work to get to fifteen hundred and fifty graduating students being considered as completers, but we're, we're working hard on this one. I think going back to the previous metric, the college and career-ready diploma will help. Again, as the information gets out there and people have a better understanding that students can earn one of those stickers or endorsements for completing a career and technical education program. Some of the challenges, and I kind of, I thought about taking that first bullet out, to be honest with you, because I think that in the last couple of years, there's been a huge awareness and appreciation of the importance of career and technical education. So you might not see that one again after today. But when you go down to the third bullet there, we still struggle, struggle with the hiring and the retainment of qualified CTE teachers. We have a few cases right now where we have an industry expert in the classroom, but we've kind of had to double up with maybe a substitute teacher, so that we're, we're, you know, we're legal with that. It's tough and it's hard. We rely, our HR department works super, super hard for us on this one, and we also rely a lot on word of mouth, that it's good to come here, and, and you may not make as much as you would out in the private sector, but, you know, the other benefits that are available, and you get to work with our kids as well. Strategic activities in motion. We had a meeting with our career and technical committee, that meets, they're a committee of the board, and just a few weeks ago, and President Simon Holland, you were able to come by and say thank you to them. So we gave an update on our worked, our work-based learning program. Kind of don't call it an internship so much anymore, it's more around work-based learning. That is, that is taking off like wildfire right now. We've got more and more kids that are signing up at the high school level. That's all kind of coordinated out of our CTE office, which works very closely with a designated counselor at each of the high schools. There's vetting of those employers or those folks that are hosting our students to make sure that our kids are in safe places to fulfill their work-based learning opportunities. And then we're also working, continuing to work with the state around apprenticeships. And I know we hear a lot about those. Apprenticeships are a bit different than work-based learning, partly because of maybe just the safety standards or the training that needs to happen with a student. In some cases, some areas have minimum, minimum ages for students to take part in apprenticeship programs. So we're, we're working on that, the entire state is working on that. And then that third bullet there, actually, if I could go back to the And then that third bullet there, actually, if I could go back to the second bullet under strategic activities, we are very much involved right now in a comprehensive local needs assessment, work that's happening as a result of the reauthorization, the recent reauthorizations, reauthorization of Perkins Five. Ben's team is also working closely with the office, or the Department of Career Technical Education, to talk with stakeholders, to students, to parents, to district folks about our programming and our needs assessment, and we keep a very close eye on economic forecasts for our region, and jobs of the future. We also use that information very much to inform our programming, whether it's at our new to-be-named high school, new high school, and as well as our, the current HUG campus, and as we look forward to the changes we'll make there. The third bullet there, the engagement and recruitment efforts at the middle school level, those are moving forward. I had, again, this year, I had sent you information not too long, and a superintendent's highlights about our passport to high school nights that are coming up here in November. November's a super busy month for CTE. And then also the eighth grade expo at the convention center on November 14th and 15th. That's eighth grade. We would love to get to seventh grade, maybe that might be able to happen for us, but really proud of those efforts from the department.
Are you doing Pumpkin Chunkin' this year?
Yes. Are you going to be there?
We did get to see the Pumpkin Chunkin' trebuchet being built at Sparks High School the other day, quite, quite the apparatus.
It's serious, and I'm telling you, those elementary kids, they're serious about it as well, so.
Yeah, it's, it's very fun. Anything else on, on CTE? Okay, let's move forward.
Okay, and one, one more for me here, again, Deborah Byersdorf. So this, this is a metric super proud of, and our department leader for our English learner development, English learning, your ELD department is in, is in the house with us. There's Janine back there, so I want to say thank you to her and to her staff as well. So we had set a target, so this particular metric tracks how many students by the end of sixth grade have exited EL services, English Language Services. We had set a target for last school year of 63%, and we, we beat that by 1%, 64%. Janine didn't know until just earlier this morning that we're going to set a 2% increase in that, so Janine, 66% by the end of the current school year, but they can do it, that's a great team in that department. Our ELD teacher model, so this is the model we put in place a couple of years ago, with the idea being that all teachers are teachers of our English learners. We have now expanded that to 33 elementary schools, for the most part. That is going great. That is being very well-received, great professional learning that's happening as a result of that. So I know Janine and her team are, are super proud of that. Title III funds, so those are funds that help us kind of deploy, whether it's resources, if, if it's people, professional learning, maybe assistance in a, in a school, in a classroom, as well as materials. Janine oversees our Title III funding, along with our grants department, so I wanted to include some information about that. Challenges, and, and challenges are not necessarily, I think, something that you can always surpass or, or fix, or neither are they always negative, but language acquisition takes time. If you think about maybe your own experience in high school, or post-high school, and trying to learn a lesson, or a, a different language, a second or third language, it takes time, and it takes time for our students as well. So it's hard sometimes when we see results, and our kids maybe didn't exit services as quickly as we, we would have liked them to, but again, takes time. And then I would like to go down to talk just about a couple of the strategic activities in motion. Back to the adoption of our K5 ELA, English Language Arts curriculum, our ELD department has been super, super involved in leading the efforts around that as well. We very much believe in inclusionary practices for all of our students, including our ELs, our students who are in the classroom, receiving that Tier One instruction, and interventions is needed from their teachers, who are also learning about, better learning about the needs of our EL students. And then PLCs, wanted to bring that back again. I talked earlier about district-level PLC work. Our ELD department is very much actively engaged, not only in their own PLCs, whether it's with our, our, our new ELD teacher model, it's with our newcomer centers that are located at high schools and some of our middle schools, but very much a focus and a commitment to continued improvement through that process as well.
And big thank you to the team that's working on that. I can't even imagine the challenges, meeting kids from Sparks Middle School the other day that have been in the country just a few months, and don't read and write in their own language, and they're 13 years old. I just can't even imagine how challenging it is, so kudos to the team that's working on this and getting such great results.
Sparks Middle School, and I'm hoping Janine is shaking her head yes back there. Sparks Middle School is a shining star for what's going on in English Language Development at middle school. They're one of our Zoom schools. They're always open to new, all of our schools are, but Spark stands out under the leadership of Principal Ting. But just, just the work that they do, and how wel, well, you saw that, how welcoming and, and committed they are to the needs of, of our English learners there.
Great. Okay, let's keep rolling.
Okay, so next, and we can go through these ones real quickly. This is the data warehouse BIG. So this, the, the metric itself is the number of regular users of the data warehouse, so that they use it monthly, or multiple times throughout the year. The metric, or the target was 1,000, 1,329, that was a 5%, to be a 5% increase over the year before. It looks like we missed it by six users, so I got to be doing my own brown bag lunches and recruiting. But it, we, we're, the way we're kind of increasing, so anyway, I would ask for the target next year to be another 5% increase, which would be 1,389. And we're kind of building, there's an amazing team in IT and in my office, working on several reports throughout the pathway. We put a lot of energy into graduation pathway and kind of student profiles. Now we're doing a lot of work with Read by Grade Three and MTSS, and kind of making more user-friendly data for teachers, and parents, and students, all to kind of be, be able to read the language and the data that comes out, and kind of help them kind of meet their intervention, meet their learning goals. So I think this, even though I'll set the target at 1,389, I think we'll blow past that this year. And we're always building, one of my favorite things to do, and the team's amazing again, is to listen to, to teachers, and I'm thrilled that, we never went out and bought a canned product for the data warehouse. We use kind of our license, and we have people in-house building it. So when we go out to a school, and a principal or a teacher says, yeah, this is pretty good, it's useful, but if you did this tweak tweak, then it would be amazing for us, and we could run back to the office, and within a week, get, get that done. And like I said, as Read by Three requirements kind of change, we're able to adapt reporting to them, and make, hopefully, the whole point of this is to make teachers' jobs easier, to get rid of some of the noise, and kind of have the, the information there in front of them. So that's the number of regular users. The next metric is the number of monthly reports run.
Can we just back up to the, to the users, and maybe you're going to show me in a minute, but, you know, outcomes. I know we're trying to work towards looking at results and not just activities. Are we measuring outcomes from that use?
No. So it's something that we evaluate, and internally, look at who's using what reports, and kind of what are the metrics, and are they relevant to that? So we get user feedback, but I have not tied it to this report. An X increase in BIG equals an X increase in graduation rate, although I can point out a trend.
Or user satisfaction, or reporting of, you know, usefulness. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we all, it's important to, to look at activity, but it's really important to look at what was the impact of that activity, so.
Yes, we originally had a metric, we do do user feedback and collect data from teaching, like I said, our goal is to be relevant. The reason I stuck, got away from surveys and, and to regular users, because, it was because, to me, a regular user implies that it's relevant to them, and they'll keep going back and running reports. So it is something that we, and we have a lot of metrics. I agree with you that this probably isn't the most kind of pointed metric, but there are a lot of things we look at in terms of return on investment, and making sure that this goes well. I do think, obviously, the work of graduation has, is done in the schools by the humans and the student, the educators and the students. I do think the use of the data warehouse has helped us kind of work with.
Yeah, and I, it doesn't necessarily need to be graduation rates, but just something that helps us to keep our eye on the ball of what, what's having an impact.
Yeah, actually, I, I think that's really, I will do a little internal.
May I comment on that?
Yeah, please, Dr. Lamarcus.
Very quickly, I mean, I, I realize that quantitative indicators are critically important. Qualitatively, the capacity in our buildings to use data, to integrate data from multiple sources as they plan, as they make improvements, it's night and day compared to where it was 10 years ago. So things such as the warehouse are paying off tremendously, but that's more qualitative. So when you hear of a focus around PLCs, the PLCs, the engine of that is data. They're going to be accessing information from BIG. So that's not necessarily, you know, when we draw, we always draw a line to graduation, we always draw a line to other achievement indicators, but along that path, there are a lot of qualitative kind of changes as well.
Yeah, yeah, which I, I know, I just, I would challenge us all to try to find some ways to, to call out what those impacts are and to measure them. Yep. Okay, okay. I know it's hard, but it's hard.
No, I think it's, I took some notes just now. I think there are some things we could do internally, looking at, I mean, and thank you, Paul, for kind of articulating that, I couldn't before. But when we do things like Read by Three, and populate user-friendly data for parents and for students and for teachers, to see if that helps, I mean, we can't tie it straight to, obviously, benchmark's going to be part of it, teaching and professional learning, but it is something that we want to, want to study, and we should be a little bit more aware of the kind of the exact tie-in. This next metric is very similar to the one before, except for its average number of reports run monthly, and the target was 10 and a half thousand. The actual was 11,771, so this one surpassed it. I would ask for another five percentage point, or 5% increase in the number of monthly, average monthly reports run. That would put us at 12,360. Again, I'm confident in that metric, especially as we build up and down the pathway for Read by Grade Three, and some kind of easy user-friendly MTSS stuff. And I will kind of, more and more schools are using the absenteeism dashboard that we built in the data warehouse to kind of really laser in on students that are chronically absent, and reach out to them.
Great. I just want to let everybody know that we're going to need to be patching Trustee Kelly in at 10:30, so we'll take a little break at about 10:30, so JJ can get him patched in. Okay? And I now have 10:26. Okay.
Should we do one more metric?
Yeah.
Are there any questions on the data warehouse?
Nope. Okay.
Okay, so we'll move to 1.1.4. This is core credits, so this is the number of students, the way it's defined is, by the end of 10th grade, have they earned the core credits that they need? And this is a good indicator of both graduation, but also college and career readiness diploma, and advanced honors diploma. So what the core credits are typically, two in English, two math, which is typically algebra and geometry, and two science, for instance, biology and chemistry, and then one social studies course. So you can see, the previous year, 1718, was 63. Last year, the actual was 64, so which was a one percentage point increase, but we didn't make, meet the target, which was 65.
And again, the percentage means the percentage of students that are earning those core credits by 10th grade?
Exactly.
Okay.
By the end of 10th grade, and that puts them in a real good spot to kind of finish out the pathway, and start taking advanced courses, and dual credit, and CTE.
Okay. Yes, yes, Dr. Taylor.
Just really quickly on that, there's a couple of times we've asked, it's a percentage of what? Is there a way it can show up on our pages when we do this next time? So as we're looking at percentages, we know exactly what percentage we're.
The new target?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah, I think that's, yeah.
If that's a place, if there's a place we can see that along the way, next time we do this, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the operational definitions, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then 1920 target?
1920 target, we would ask for 66%, which would be a two percentage point increase, and I'm going to let other people talk, I think Troy wanted to say something.
In the presence of time, I think I'll save my comments for our next slide, and when we get to the end of the academic.
I'll comment, if, if it's okay. I really think this is one of the most critical indicators we have along the pathway. There was a time when we focused just on students earning five or more credits as a freshman, and what we learned from that is many students were doing that, and that was a good indicator, but often it was electives, and not some of the core credits. So this is a very strong kind of part of the backbone of the performance pathway.
That's great, that's great.
I just wanted to agree with Dr. Lamarcus. I think this is a key indicator, and we're going to come up to 155, the high school metric, and these are two that are extremely important, as when we're talking about that pathway, and when we're talking about the system improvements. Because if we're not on target with this one, we're going to see the backend come out through the graduation rate. So this is extremely important for the supports that we provide our, our schools.
Okay, let's take a break then, and we'll get Trustee Kelly connected. Can we break for, let's say, until 10:40? Is that all right? Okay. Okay, well, let's get going again. We're back in session for our work session of November 1st with the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Lamarcus, looks like it's up to you.
Thank you very much for the record, Paula Lamarcus. And again, this is a team approach, but I guess I'll lead off on this particular conversation. In some ways, this is a, it's a summary of the graduation indicator and the S-PAC indicators around English and math. The, the metric, so that we're all clear, is we establish this for the disproportionality measures, where more than 50% of the groups are making gains that are in excess of the district as a whole. For, for this one, it's a little bit different for the, the other access indicators. In terms of highlights, a couple of important highlights, well, let me back up. The next page in your packet is the data, so what you are going to see is relative to the graduation rate, we've made very good progress in terms of narrowing gaps, but with respect to the grades three through eight, English Language Arts, math, and reading, not, not so much. So again, that's going to be a challenge. In terms of highlights, those changes at the graduation level are very impressive, important. Also, increased access to AP, IB, dual-credit CTE courses, and not only access, but success in those classes has been on the increase, and, and so that's, that's very definitely a highlight. I know that, I think it's actually been several weeks now, I could be wrong, but the work of the Equitable Task Force is also, I think, a critical highlight for us, because as a district, we're taking it on at the policy level, and a variety of different access points for students. You know, in terms of challenges, I would just say that these challenges are not unique to Washoe County School District. In terms of disparities in performance, they're a nationwide challenge. More specific to education in our system is, is maintaining high expectations for all students at every grade level, with respect to all content area. And it's more than just words, it's action. So the materials that are being used have to demonstrate that high expectations are in place for all kids, with appropriate scaffolding, et cetera. So another challenge is continuing our equity conversations with urgency. Equity, and I know Tiffany has talked with you all about this in the past, these sorts of, you know, cultural competency, these sorts of conversations aren't like you go to the one training, and you check it off, and you're done. These are ongoing forever sorts of conversations. Until we narrow all these gaps, we have to approach this with urgency. Strategies in motion, we have our Equity one-on-one courses, we have a variety of other professional development opportunities for administrators and school teams, through the Equity Department, and through other outlets. Our PLC work that Troy, and Debbie, and Ben have all commented on, all of that is being approached in part through an equity lens, and we shared that equity lens with you when we were talking about behavior a couple of weeks back with the board. we were talking about behavior a couple of weeks back with the board. Anything that my colleagues would like to add?
Yeah, real quickly, thank you, Dr. Lamarcus. I would like to add, first and foremost, I am going to pumpkin junkin' tomorrow. And then, building on what, these metrics and the key things that we've been talking about, I want to acknowledge that it's a little daunting that Dr. McNeil gave the responsibility of all schools and all kids to the Office of School Leadership. And as area superintendents, I can tell you, while we're in a place where we're really still trying to comprehend the extreme influence we now have across all schools and all kids, we are really excited about this idea that, while I would say we've been collaborative always in the past, now when we talk about achievement gaps and we talk about monitoring of kids, it is all under one roof, the Office of School Leadership. So there aren't any barriers to, hey, let's stay in our lane, because it's all our lane. So I must build on what Paul said, and as we put professional learning communities back on the front and really pay attention to student learning outcomes, while we have, you know, the equity department under Tiffany Young's leadership is doing tremendous work, I feel, for all of us, we need to be reminded that that equity work needs to work towards academic equity, and academic equity, we are going to have to defy what is the oldest rule in academics, is that socioeconomic status dictates achievement. Academic equity with the focus, we have got to close those gaps, and that is very exciting, comprehensive collaboration across the district work, that the only way we're going to get there is through continuing to go down, becoming a more focused, continuous improvement professional learning community. So I just wanted to add that with each of these, it's going to take all of our departments. Office of School Leadership has a tremendous responsibility, and I'm excited about the ground-level work that is happening right now for us to be, as you said, President Simon Holland, focused on outcomes.
Great, thank you, Dr. Parks. Dr. McNeil?
So just really quickly, if we can flip the slide forward, JJ, real quick. So for on the record for the 1920 targets, then what we'll probably want to do is to go down within these four graphs, and these are concerning. When you take a look at English Language Arts, I mean, I'm not going to go through every single one of these percentages, but when we're saying two of eight made improvements, and you see that in math, and you see that in third grade reading, we're celebrating for your graduation rates, but this is a really good indicator on the health, again, of our pathway. So if we can be able to put this on the record when we're talking about 1920 targets, and we can put that into more of a document type, thank you.
We certainly can do that, and just, and that's a very good point. So the overall rate change remains as it does in the earlier indicators, and then for this one, we want the majority of groups surpassing that, because if we're making the gain as a district as a whole, and the majority of groups are surpassing our goal for the district as a whole, then we know over time we're narrowing those gaps. But I think Dr. McNeil's right, we can get that more articulated for you.
That's great, thank you. Okay, anything else on 1.2.1? We know, we know we have a lot of work to do, we are doing a lot of work. It's a, it's a long, long journey, but I appreciate that we all own it, and I know there's a lot of work going on. But if there are things that the board needs to be doing, I hope that that will be part of what you all tell us as we go through.
Quite frankly, this is one of them, focusing on all these issues. So if no questions, we'll move on to Ready for High School, 1.5.5. So, excuse me, that was not very polite. Our actual in 1718, we're 58% of the students being ready for high school. We didn't hit that metric, we were at 56%. Our target had been 61%. I believe we would like to keep the same target for the current school year. Oh, you want, okay, so I stand corrected. Our target that we would like to have on paper would be 58%. Highlights relative to this metric, and this has been a highlight, I think, for the school district for some time, is this early warning system that we have built that basically provides some information, early warning information, or just a signal at a very early age, every grade level, kindergarten on up, of students that may need some extra support. It kind of goes hand in hand with the multi-tiered systems of support framework, which is also a highlight. That's a problem-solving framework, and really, it forces us to make decisions relative to each individual student. Zoom support, WIDA and other tools are critically needed and are in place to monitor the progress of our EL population.
And WIDA again means?
Let me, let me look that up.
What is it?
Yeah, it's the, it's the EL standards out of Wisconsin, yeah.
Yeah, it's an English language acquisition.
Wisconsin indicators of, I'll find out.
In terms of some of the challenges that we do face with this, again, as previously, it's maintaining those grade level expectations and beyond just words, but in terms of our materials, our practices. It's combining information from multiple systems. I do, and I said that earlier, I think qualitatively, we're in a much better place than we once were, but it's a heavy lift for schools to look at early warning systems information, WIDA information, S-PAC information, climate information, integrating all of that in order to make progress. The other major challenge that we have is getting, and President Simon Holland mentioned this earlier, it's getting as many of our eighth graders to leave eighth grade ready for high school as possible, but we still have an obligation for every student who enters high school to help them graduate. And those are ongoing challenges, but that's like the challenge of being in education, so we take that on, but we should point it out.
Dr. Lamarcus and team, I would love, when we are redoing our, you know, this is envisioned 2020, and we'll be in 2020 in a matter of months, when we do our next strategic plan update, I'd really like to put a marker in to be ambitious with this one. We should not, and I know you're not, we should not be satisfied, not only is it only 56%, but we've lost ground. So, you know, I would love to see us have a 65% in a few years, or whatever it is, because I agree with you, this is a critical path piece of everything we're doing, and obviously, it all flows together, I know that, but there are points, which you all have clearly identified, at which we need to really do a deep dive, and we owe that to our children. So I just want to put a marker in that in our next strategic plan, this one gets an ambitious goal, and we work, you know, we work as hard as we can on this one. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I've been, just as we've gone through the, our presentation this morning, and again, thank you so much for your work, and I know great work is being done, but I would like to hear, just as we move forward and talk about budget and those kinds of things like that, is for us to meet these goals and be, those ones, those really significant markers that you've shared, because I've learned, you know, I've been on the board five years, and I've learned, I've learned a lot this morning, and there are some really significant areas for us to focus in on, is what is it going to take in those significant key areas, areas, whether from a budgetary standpoint, or from a, what support you need from the board, or whatever, what's it going to take for us to start moving the needle in those areas? Does that make sense?
Yes.
I would love to hear that, so that we're making decisions in that direction, because those, these are certainly critical areas, and those ones that really, 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 it all matters, let's just be honest, we know it, it all matters. But I know there are some that are really critical. What's it going to take for us to move the needle in those? I mean, I'd love to hear something when we start talking about making budget decisions.
Okay, I think we can all, actually, we all just took a vote, and President Holland inspired us. We're going to go back to the 61 percentage point increase for the target for next year. Genuinely, we are.
And I don't mean to be dictating, because as Dr. Taylor said, we know that everybody is working hard on this, and there are just some things, so I appreciate that. I don't want you to feel like I'm pressuring you, I wanted to give us a longer lead time, but.
I think, well, and Dr. Taylor, it was inspired to kind of move, so what we need is a million things, but we need for the board to focus on some of these metrics and to bring them up every once in a while and make sure that we're focusing on them. We, as a leadership team, need to get rid of some of the noise and get some of the stuff off the plates of schools so that they can focus on stuff like this. When we're talking about 56% of students, and remember, and we didn't, we don't have it on the slide like Dr. Taylor suggested, but next time we will, operationally, this isn't that conservative a metric. This is at least a level two on reading, on ELA, on math, and on science, so you're ready to access the curriculum with some momentum when you get to high school. So it's not that difficult. We're not asking everybody to be college-ready, but we're asking them to be able to be, to reach with momentum the high school curriculum, and if 56% is way too low for that, for sending them to a high school pathway. So where we need to focus on, well, did you have something to say? I think going back to what Troy has said many times, what each of us have kind of commented on, grade level standards, grade level material, having the material in front of students, and having a system of multi-tiered systems of support, like Paul said, where we reach when a student is not responding to the curriculum, we reach that child right away and get it up there. So this metric should be 70, which would lead to maybe a 75 for core credit, which would lead to a 90% college-ready eventually.
Right, yeah, I think trustee Cottle and then Dr. McNeil?
Yeah, real quickly, I just want to follow up on a comment that President Simon Holland made earlier in the morning about a previous metric about outcomes, and I think, being a newer member of the board, we have so many things we're talking about today, and then there are a few things we're talking about, what's the outcome of that? And for me, if it's something that we don't really have an outcome for, I wonder why we're actually measuring it, and it really will help the board and even the district zero in on these really important metrics that then lead to college readiness, graduation, that the proficiencies of math, science, and the lower grades are going to lead to this number being higher, which is going to lead to credits being higher by 10th grade, which is going to lead to higher graduation rates. That path is so important to highlight, and if there's other things that are really important for us to measure, but maybe doesn't impact that path very much, it's not critical, maybe there's a different place to talk about that, but it is not this discussion, because it's not that main artery, it doesn't feed in as heavy, because if there's no outcome, if it doesn't really move the needle at all, it may be something that we don't want to take as much time on and focus more on a metric like this. This is my sense of being here and the couple of months that I've been here. It's all important, I think we all agree it's all important, but there's a few things that all tie together to ultimately hit the finish line.
Dr. McNeil, and then I wanted to add something on what trustee Cottle said.
No, and I couldn't agree more, and this is, this is what, this is the beauty of this presentation today, because it's calling out what those higher-level types of metrics are, that we see that there is some concern in the system for this, and, you know, we're very readily being transparent, which we need to be, but these are some of the key metrics, and in fact, in my closing notes, I said 155, this is an absolute indicator of the health of our school district, and this gets down to when we're talking resources and budgets. This talks about class sizes in algebra classes, this talks about class sizes in our, in our middle school English classes, I mean, this is absolutely an impact of that.
In the, I guess, 90s, balanced scorecards were a big deal, and I've talked with Dr. McNeil, I know she's interested in our developing some sort of a dashboard. One of the concepts in balanced scorecards and in dashboards is the concept of leading indicators, those things that are driving, as trustee Cottle said, those things that are driving the outcomes that we need. And one of the interesting things in the business world is that there was a lot of research done by Harvard that showed that employee satisfaction was a leading indicator of not only customer satisfaction, but bottom-line performance in the for-profit world. So I'm challenging myself and all of us together to be thinking about what are those leading indicators, and how can we articulate, as trustee Cottle said, you know, that dashboard of things that are really telling us the health of our district and the health of the performance, you know, the achievement that we're striving to provide for our children. So if we could think of it in terms of those leading indicators that are driving it, that would be great. I'll be quiet. Dr. Parks, you were going to say something?
I will defer, Deborah, if you would like.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Again, Deborah Byers-Duff. I want to also say too, that when we think about our customers and we think about kids accessing grade, grade level standards, we think about all those things, can't emphasize enough how important it is that our kids feel part of their school, that their teachers know who they are, their needs are being met, MTSS, social emotional learning, and all of that, and especially, it's very important at all ages, but at that, those middle school years, getting ready to go to high school, how critical it is, and then I think just a reminder of the bold move of moving to a middle school model of grade six, seven, eight, and how much, I know Pete's behind us, Pete Echhart's behind us in the work of his team, to get our sixth graders to middle school, so that our teachers, our principals, our counselors, three years getting to know those students, that is critical, and that plays so much into on-time graduation to this metric. So I just, you know, wanted to say that, that was, that was not just done because our schools were overcrowded and we needed to rectify that situation. There's also research behind why it's so important, a six, seven, eight model.
Right, right. And I want to also follow up, you know, with the analogy to employee satisfaction drives customer satisfaction, bottom-line performance, well, it also speaks to our need to make sure our employees are feeling honored and valued and happy and satisfied in their work, that's another leading indicator for us in our district. Dr. Parks?
Thank you, President Simon Holland. What I wanted to add here is, and I apologize if I am pointing out the obvious, but as you talk about leading indicators, and we on the academic side talk about essential learnings, it's very exciting to me that, you know, those are the things that we need to do as an organization, is call out the absolutely critical reason we are here, and I just want to reemphasize, our core business is student learning. We always have to be putting that at the forefront. I was glad to hear you say, and I'm hopeful that I would get to participate, I know it's time for a new strategic plan, and I, from Office of School Leadership standpoint and the responsibility that, as the lead area superintendent, that I now feel when we really, there's no more options, there's all schools, all kids, under our department, I absolutely agree with you that, and I'm saying this for all of our sake, let's be super bold about going after improving student learning outcomes. I'm hopeful that as we, I feel so much more collaborative with all departments now, and as we start to end one strategic plan and think about it. and as, as we start to end one strategic plan and think about another, uh, I would encourage us all to say, okay, what is essential for us to become a, a district that is known for academic equity, that we see all those gaps being closed, uh, and it's not at a one or 2% rate. It's nice, big, steady gains.
Good, good, good. And they, you know, there's a lot of research that shows that bold goals will actually cause you to achieve more. So, um, so, yeah. And of course, none of us want to be the one that says, let's see, you 44 kids don't get to be ready for high school and you 56 kids do. Um, you know, none of us wants to be in a position of allowing that, uh, choice. So, um, thank you for that and, and thank you for the good work and the commitment that, that exists in this district.
At the risk of sounding glib, I, I don't mean to be, I, I, I mean to sound optimistic. We have a lot of this in our institutional memory. If we go back eight years to our strategic plan, we had a pathway with key leverage points, with key indicators, just four or five of them. And underneath that was foundational indicators, which were leading indicators in. So, uh, I mean to say that with optimism that we have a lot of this in our institutional memory. We can get back to that once we build a portrait of a graduate or kind of a community promise.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Let's keep rolling. Dr. Lamarcus.
So we will move on and, but this was a great conversation. I think what we're about to head into is, is really what you're talking about. So this next set of indicators really probably are more what you would consider leading indicators, um, as opposed to the more sort of hard and fast academic outcomes. Um, we, we, we often characterize these as school climate indicators or conditions of learning. Um, these are not the best metrics for hardcore accountability, but they're absolutely critical for an organization continuing to grow. This first one is around family satisfaction. Um, and I want to point out that this, this indicator, I could be wrong because I've been focused on academic ones, has the very best headline because it's the one that's actually a headline. So the district, as you heard a couple of weeks ago, is blazing the trail
Blazing, blazing, through the throngs.
On measuring family engagement. Um, kidding aside, we actually are doing that. And it's been a collaboration and you've heard that at the October 15th meeting. It's been a strong collaboration. It's driven through coffee, council on family engagement, um, high collaboration between Ben's office and the university and Materino on the development of this index, which ties together information from our surveys, uh, from our use, our, our parents' use of infinite campus and parent attendance, parent university, uh, courses. Um, and so it's a very strong measure, but as you know, this year we're piloting it with the intent of establishing baseline at the end of the year. So we will come back to you at that point with targets. Um, I will say that one of the significant challenges associated with this is that as kind of, i- it is a multi-measure index, which is strong and it still leaves out a lot of what's done to engage families. Um, and part of that is because the uneven funding that allows some of those other activities to occur like home visits, like, uh, academic parent teacher team sorts of engagement activities. Um, I already talked about, this is better for planning and for improvement than accountability. Our, our council on family education, part of what they're focusing on this year associated with this index is to seek information from stakeholders, so principals, from parents, to make sure it's actually measuring what we want it to measure. Um, ongoing collaboration with accountability office. I know that if the Lisa were here, she would say she can't thank Ben and his group enough for all of the support that they provide. Questions or additions? All right. Um, very much related to this is, uh, 3.2.2, less flashy headline. Uh, this is around parent university. Um, again, we've had this in, in the district for quite some time now, but I think the collaboration between family school partnerships and other departments across, uh, the district has never been stronger and the result of that is higher quality, uh, courses available to our parents.
And, and Dr. Lamarcus, this is another one, um, to Dr. Taylor's point, 95% of what, um, we?
Right. This is, right. We will get our operational definitions next time in front of you, but this is 95% satisfaction with the particular courses that parents attended.
Okay.
But we, but you're right. We need to make those operational definitions visible. It's even helpful to the presenters.
[laughing]
You know, challenges, I do want to say that, that, so the PLC work, sometimes you can, you can assume that it's very, very focused on academic outcomes and it is, um, but also we have PLCs where a family school partnership staff is working with teachers within buildings around family engagement. It's strong support for our newer teachers who, who may not have a lot of experience and have the best ways to engage families. Um, building positive relationships. If the only thing a family hears is the negative, you don't, you're not going to get very far.
Can I just
Yes.
Explore a little bit. So there are many ways for, for families to receive learning about, um, about their students. And, um, many parents go to the SEL conferences, et cetera. And I'm wondering if in the future, in a, in a future, um, strategic plan, whether we might think about, um, what they call in, in the private sector world, sort of market penetration? How many, what percentage of our families participate in any, in anything that is helping them learn? Uh, because the parent university is an, an important piece, but it's not the only piece. And our goal is to make sure that parents are accessing those educational opportunities for themselves. So may, just again, not now, but in a future iteration, what percentage of families actually partake or access some sort of educational opportunity, uh, that we provide? It might be harder to capture, but, um, but, you know.
That, I, that's a, thank you for the point. It's a critically important point. And, and all I would say is the, the, the difficulty we have when we focus on something like parent university, it then becomes the work of the family school partnerships department for family engagement. Family engagement is principal teachers and then all central office support.
Right.
So you're right. The SEL mini-conferences is a great example of family parent engagement and it's not captured in these indicators.
Yeah. So we might just broaden ourselves. Dr. Taylor had something she wanted to add?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this was, uh, was on, but I'm glad I'm, I'm actually glad I'm commenting after you because I think there's a connection. I wonder, certainly I agree that there are a variety of ways and I would love, I, I don't know how we get there, but man, it'd be great to see. Cause I want, I, I think the, 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 the staff, the team is working really hard on those ways in the schools and otherwise. And it's like, I, you know, I want them to get credit for that. Credit, if you will, for the throngs that are watching. They can see me doing this. Um, after, you know, chunking the pumpkin. Um, but I, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's because it really is a more accurate reflection because we know how important this piece is. The other thing I would like to see is other things that may be harder to measure in the schools, um, but other things, whether it's parent university, which was my initial comment, um, is, is, I like to see, I like to disaggregate that a little bit, you know, for our, our parents that are from underrepresented groups, whether it's our disabled parents, our GT parents, our special ed parents, our, our diverse parents, our, um, our racially diverse, I should say, all that's diversity, our, our ELL parents, or any, any group that we think would be important, especially when it comes down to those achievement gaps. Because that might help us if, man, if there is an opportunity in a group, Native American culture, for an example, that, that doesn't do well on our achievement, maybe if there isn't, if we can get more of those parents involved, you know, maybe there, we can, we can begin to see, um, maybe not causality, but some kind of correlation. Because we know the research shows that there is a correlation. So that might, I'd love for there to be a way, and it may just be in parent university to say, hey, who's, who's participating? Cause you know, we don't know what parent calls a school and so on, but maybe if, if this is a way that we can measure, who, who, cause then it tells us, hey, who we're missing. And let's look, hey, that, that could help us with some of our gaps.
Good point.
I, I would like to comment just briefly on that. So with parent university, some of that data has been explored and, and it hasn't, it hasn't really revealed critical differences. However, if you'll remember the index in terms of infinite campus use, um, as well as completion of the survey, we're, we've actually built that into the metric itself. So, um, uh, just greater, uh, parent involvement on the survey results in some points within the index, but greater parent involvement among certain groups of parents who have traditionally less often been involved gets you more points. So you're right. Well, we're focusing in on that. It hasn't really come out with parent university though, interestingly enough, the sort of disproportionality.
Okay, good. All right. Ready to move on to the next one, chronic absenteeism.
Okay. And this, this one is my favorite one. Um, so I'm going to talk for like 30 minutes at least.
Dr. Lamarcus, did we actually have a target for 1920 for, uh?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
For 22?
Actually, we do. And, and, uh, the target should have been 92%, but I think since we hit 95%, we would like to keep it at 95% and just maintain that. Um, I, I hesitate to do that because with survey data, you can get some blips. Um, and then just as a sidebar, in terms of the, the goals, I, I really got to say, I, I shouldn't be saying this, but I really liked the feel of this meeting today. It's so different than it's been in several years. It seems more collaborative. It seems that while we're very concerned about many of these measures, we're all in agreement that we're trying to move forward. It's not about what you haven't done. It's what we can do better. Um, and so stretching ourselves is really important. And for, from a staff perspective, knowing that we're stretching ourselves, but, but that the point isn't to point out what we've done wrong, but how we get better, that, that's okay. Because if we don't get there, we know that the following year we'll adjust and we'll work harder. So thank you for that.
And we all own it. We all own it. We're all responsible.
So with 5.1.1, uh, well, actually my, 5.1.2 is my favorite, but I like chronic absenteeism as well. Um, and I won't be a chunking pumpkin because I'll be, I'll be in Washington DC at, on a, a conference around children in transition and foster and, um, so chronic absenteeism is a, is a real problem in our district. Um, as you know, it was at 19% at baseline. Uh, it dropped drastically this particular year. And part of that was because of our use of the TEP code, uh, which was Temporary Educational Placement Code, as I think what the, the acronym is for. Essentially, if a student missed but made up all of the work, we excuse that particular absence. We learned later, uh, from the state that, that, that really isn't acceptable in terms of attendance accounting, but even taking that out, we made progress with this particular metric. So our goal for next year is 15%.
Okay.
That's a very ambitious target.
It is.
But that's our goal. Um, in terms of, of highlights, um, again, we had the significant reduction. Um, and I do think one of the most important highlights, and this is a qualitative highlight, is that I believe our schools are recognizing that absenteeism and especially chronic absenteeism is a signal of greater issues affecting students. And so it, you know, we got to get the kids to school to learn, but often we recognize there are other barriers that they're facing that where we need to support families. Uh, challenges, um, developing plans to engage students and to motivate students to come to school is very difficult. And part of the problem is that we often are doing that work when kids hit, are already chronically absent, sometimes chronically, chronically absent or severely chronically absent. They're so far behind, it's very frustrating. You know, we, we talk about kind of in the behavioral world about kids who internalize versus externalize. A lot of the kids who don't attend are kids who internalize. So when we talked about behavior, those are kids who externalize, our kids who don't attend are internalizing. And it's very difficult to get them motivated, building in those incentives to get them to attend. Oftentimes, we have to work with the families and get the families' resources. And that's another barrier. It's just, it, it's, it's a signal of bigger, deeper problems. Um, strategies in action, as I believe you know, we've talked about in the past, our student advisory review boards or attendance review boards, uh, where we try and work with other agencies to support families. Integration with MTSS so that attendance is part of that problem-solving framework. Um, and, and ongoing sort of integration with the, uh, work we do with family resource centers as well as children in transition. Very critical.
Can I ask a question that's, um, not particularly on this, but, um, one of the things that I, um, hear about in the community from people who are detractors is that certain things we're doing, and, and it comes to mind because we had a lot of parent pushback on the absence policy, um, but certain things that we're doing or implementing are going to cause people to pull their kids out of the district and put them into charter schools and private schools. And I wonder if we keep track of, um, transfers to local charter and private schools out of the district and then re-enrollments back into the district? Because I think, I think it's worth our knowing whether that's true or not. Um, and, um, and, you know, maybe, and we've talked about this before, sort of marketing, but, you know, having focus groups of folks who do leave and try to understand what were the pain points that caused them to leave? And are they based on accurate information or are they based on old information that's not still true? Um, so I just want to put a marker in for that. It's not related to this necessarily, but the, the attendance issues did, did cause me to think about it. And maybe we can flag that for a future version to take a look at that. How many kids are transferring out to local charters and private schools and how many kids are re-enrolling back in the district from local charters and privates?
Uh, Ben Hughes, for the record. Yeah, we track a lot, to the extent we can, especially with our sponsored charter schools, um, students coming in and out. And then we kind of, we have to proxy data, uh, go, students going to state charter schools. In fact, Adam Searshee, um, gave us some data yesterday that provided some information. And then just kind of, it's more anecdotal with who goes to the private schools. Um, but I can tell you for the local charters, um, the ones we sponsor, we do track that and we end up getting more back than we send typically, but it, it goes back and forth. We've never, I don't have an exact number. We haven't looked at it. A few years of, of our students who leave to a charter and then come back within a year.
Yeah. I would just, you know, not today, but just at some point, it would be great for the board to be able to understand that information and, and, and watch those trends. Um, because it's, you know, it is important to us. Um, it's worth millions of dollars when kids leave our system. So, yes, ma'am.
So just super quickly, so last year we had the enrollment task force and we had actually done some survey data on this. And, and one of the trends, um, we'll see students typically leave for a charter, um, in the upper elementary ages and then middle school and then return back for, for our high school, our comprehensive high schools or a programming aspect of one of our high schools. But some of the, some of the anecdotal, um, responses came back on these surveys as far as large class sizes,
Uh-huh.
bullying.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, different types of curriculum, whether they wanted to go to more of a, a niche like we were talking about the other night at the Indy conference or the Indy interview. Um, you know, whether it's a Coral Academy or something like that, but, but we have explored that.
Yeah. Just, yeah, for the future. Just one of those random things that passes through my brain. Yes. Vice President Raymond?
Sorry, quickly back on, on the chronic absenteeism. Um, it seems to me that a big component of the success of reaching that 15% or, uh, component of it is, um, communication and consistency. And so I think to me, it seems pretty critical that the policy not change, if at all possible. Is there any plan to change it again? I think it seems, as a parent, I felt this year, you know, the communication about it was good. It was confusing because it was something else last year and then it changed again. And I just want to know, it wouldn't ever be enough for me to leave the district personally, well, for obvious reasons too, but I mean, I didn't, it didn't seem, you know, it doesn't seem like it's that, uh, extreme. It just is hard when you have one set of like, this is the, this is the goal. And I know that's hard for our teachers too. So it just seems like consistency would be good for this one.
Yeah, we agree. Uh, so there's no plans to change anything. I think right now, and it was, I agree, it was confusing, um, last year and then changed into this year. I think right now the policy we have is the clearest and the cleanest to understand. So we're going to stick with that.
Okay. All right.
So 5.1.2? Excuse me, 5.1.2. Um, this is the disproportionality. It's kind of, it's, it's very related to some of the previous indicators. Um, in terms of highlights, we are regularly reviewing, let me actually skip forward really quick. So we talk about the metric. So this is the one, it's a little So, we talk about the metric. So, this is the one, it's a little bit different than graduation rate and the academic achievement indicators. We're using the likelihood ratios to measure this. So, again, sort of the goal with the likelihood ratios is that we would see a one in every cell. So, in other words, if five percent of your population is African-American, that's your total student population, then you would probably believe that five percent of the kids in AP courses are African-American. And five percent of the kids who are getting suspended are African-American. And if that were the case, you'd see a one point oh in the cell. So, when you see more than a one, then you have sort of over-proportionality. And when you have less than one, you have under-proportionality. Alright? So, the, the metric that we have for you, or kind of the way it's operationalized, is we want the majority of groups to move towards a one, and that was, we would meet standard. And if three-quarters of those groups move towards one, then we've exceeded standards. So, we've exceeded expectations with these particular metrics. Well, these two examples. Across the board, in terms of AP, IB, dual-credit, CTE, we, we moved every group towards proportionality. That's good. That means there's more access for traditionally underserved kids. With respect to suspensions, there actually should be an X in the box for low socioeconomic status on that lower section, because the, the decrease from two point one point three to one point seven three is actually very significant. So, in eight out of the eleven groups, we've moved towards proportionality. So, this is a good sign, that some of the equity work, et cetera, is starting to pay off.
That's good.
And, and so, for the future, the targets remain the same. Meaning, we want to continue to move towards one with the majority of our groups. Highlights, we are on an ongoing basis working with our schools around disproportionality, using data to drive those discussions. The equity and diversity training, I believe, has been a highlight. We, we provide a ton of support as well around family engagement, social-emotional learning, PBIS. And those are all highlights, in my opinion. In terms of challenges, we still, even though we have, we have optimism because we're moving towards proportionality, we still have persistent disparities. And that, that, that's really a bother. I feel as if we still need to work on that clear articulation between these conditions for learning, climate, and academic achievement. So, the one hesitation I have with sort of, these are leading and the others are outcome, is they're all interrelated. But they do have to fit in sort of a logical progression. And quite frankly, we just need deeper implementation around family engagement, around PBIS, around social-emotional learning. Those are critical to the success of all of our students. Strategies, we are doing everything we can to align our central office supports so that schools don't feel as if twelve different things are coming at them. But one thing's coming at them. And it may have multiple sort of, you know, tentacles, but it's one thing. And that's conditions top to my student learning. Ongoing behavioral support, I think as, one thing that could've got lost when we presented to you a couple weeks ago with Jen Van Tresser, Area Superintendent, also in charge of special education, is we are working really hard to align our behavioral support for both general education and special education students. And I think that will go a long way in terms of helping kids be successful, also morale within our buildings. And then, I just wanna mention that as part of Dr. McNeil's plan, our task force around school climate and student behavior, that's been stood up. We've met once. We have our second meeting, which will occur in the second week, or third week of November, probably on the eighteenth or nineteenth. And, and that's a, that's a group of teachers, of principals, of parents, potentially of students, central office administrators, really trying to get our head behind, how can we better support teachers, better support students around student safety? Any questions or comments?
What, this is a, this is a three-year average. So, how, how are we defining a target for five point one point three?
So, we're, we're moving to five point one point three?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm ahead. I'm cheating. Okay.
So, I'm gonna take that as we can go to five point one point three.
Sorry, yes.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I'm, sorry.
No, I realize we've already been here a long time.
No, that's, that's right.
And these are all very important. So, this is our, really sort of our perception indicators, our climate indicators. It's built basically, primarily around our surveys that we do annually for students, for staff, as well as parents. We have, we've got it broken down, I'm sorry, let me get, catch myself up. We've got it broken down into these three general areas that are captured within the surveys and by each of these audiences. So, we essentially have nine indicators. What you're seeing is an average over three years for each one of those indicators. And then, what we committed to you in June was that the goal would be, we would see an increase in at least five of the nine cells annually. It's a rolling three-year average, but what we're striving for is an increase in at least five of the nine cells. Okay?
Okay.
Alright. And we can come back to that.
Is that, I'm, I'm just mulling that. I mean, obviously, our goal would be to increase nine of nine cells by something. I mean, that, again, I wouldn't say that, well, okay, if we had an increase in staff perception, but the student perception went way down, that that would be okay. I, I don't know, I'm just, I wanna throw that out for conversation. I do understand the, the smoothing, you know, the three-year average. And, and that, like with disproportionality, we want to have increases in a majority of the areas. I just wanna, I just wanna throw that out because none of those cells are less important than the others, I guess. I, you know, they're, they're very important. They're important populations and they're important targets of, of climate. Just thoughts? Dr. Taylor?
I'll, I'll say two things. One is, I, I agree. I, I think I'd like to see progress in each. And I, I know that's, that's ambitious, but we always want to be getting better, or at least, you know, where we don't go backwards, you know, if there's a way for us to freeze it in that way. But I, but the question that I have that, that's related, but it's a little different is, now explain again why the three-year average, as opposed to watching trends year to year?
So, so, and I think actually, part of the discussion of both of these questions is, if we had the ability to do scientific samples within each of our buildings, of students, of parents, and, and of staff, then we would have more confidence on an annual basis in terms of the metrics. The, the three-year average provides some stability, so it kinda helps control for some fluctuations that can occur. Yeah, there, you know, for example, something, something particularly problematic could occur in a building, say, just before the window that the survey opens. And so, there's a floodgate. So, there's a lot more people in a particular year that respond than have historically. Those are the sorts of things that Ben always refers to as noise. So, there's a lot of noise in these kinds of indicators. I, I, I guess, I, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for Ben or for, for anyone here. If we're all confident that we're using this to grow as a, as a organization, and it's not hard and fast accountability, then, then, yeah, we, we need to improve every one of these cells. We just need to realize that we have less control over perception metrics than perhaps any other metrics that we have.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah. Dr. McNeil?
And I'll just add, this was almost a, a, the same conversation that we had. And so, I just wanted to remind the board that this was the metric that we had a lot of conversation about in the past. And it was about that perception. And, and I'll just give a, a very grim example. But, you know, student safety and the, and the safety of our buildings is gonna always have the perception when something as tragic as Parkland happened. And, and that's what we're talking about. That was part of the reason why we wanted to do a three, a three-year average.
Okay, well.
Well, I say remind me, so thank you for the reminder.
Yep. We'll, we'll, we'll leave it as it is, I guess. But it's a good conversation.
One thing that you can sort of rest assured is, we don't pick off each of these cells and figure out how we're gonna deal with that one cell.
Sure.
So, we are working towards all of them.
I, I know you are. Mr. Hayes, did you have something?
I think I would just agree with Dr. Lamarcas. There, if this is not an accountability measure, which it's not, it's our strategic plan. And, and as he commented earlier, we're all partners in this to get better together. I, I think I would just as soon leave it as the target, there's nine different targets up there, and to increase each one of them. And we can, and this is what we talked about maybe eighteen months ago with this metric, is we wanna monitor these and find out if, if, why is something flat, or why is something going down? Which is, to your point, there's no cell that's any less important than another one. So, I, I think we came up in, in, at Truckee Meadows in May, came up with the five out of nine metric, because it was more of an accountability feel back there and tied to evaluation. So, I, I, I agree with Dr. Lamarcas, and I agree with you, that maybe we should put it as nine different targets, and we wanna increase each cell.
And I, I would argue that this, this may be one of those leading indicators. Climate, climate drives a lot, but...
If I may, I'll just, I'll just add, and based upon that, and I appreciate the comments. Because again, I think that the, the trend data is important for me. If, if, if we stay with five, and let's say there, and we have, and I was gonna say, our goal is five, and we're, and we're, you know, getting better in seven. I want, I wanna see the trend of the two that we aren't, just because of, man, if, if students are down every year, even though we're meeting the metric and feeling really great about it, but if students are down every year, or if parents are down every year, or something like that, then that gives us something, you know, to, that, that does tell us something. Hey, here's an area that we can work on. So, I, I would like to see the, the, if we see the nine, then it's easier, it would be easier for us to watch the trends.
I do think we can definitely display the data for purposes of a report like this to, to, to meet your need. I will say that Ben's office annually puts together very comprehensive reports around school climate. All that information is available on the web. One, one of the kinda, so, leading, leading indicators that I think is critically important in this is that I think everyone now does not question the importance of the viewpoints of multiple stakeholders. So, it's not just what the school thinks is important. It's not just what the students think is important. It's also the parents. And when we see mismatches between those perceptions, we know we have to work. That's, that's really actually hard to do. And that's, that's important. Our schools sort of embrace this now. And I think there was a time when maybe that was a little foreign. Any, any additional questions, or do we move forward?
Well, I, I will add that I know in years past, and I don't know if it's currently true, I have heard from educators that they were reluctant to complete the climate survey because they felt that it would reflect badly on them in their school site. And I, I know work has been done on that. But I, that's, that's another reason not to put a lot on this one as a, you know, as something that people will suffer consequences of if it doesn't improve. So, I just wanna make sure we, we all understand. That's one of the points you're all making about perception studies. Dr. McNeil?
And I'll just very quickly to wrap up. You know, our principals do take very seriously when they take a look at the, at the survey data. And it's a conversation that they have with their area superintendent. But it is more along that trend, that if we continue to see issues with morale or, or staff feeling not supported, and vice versa, if we start to see an uptick, that's a conversation that the area superintendent has with the, with the leadership in, in the school to find out, what are you do, what are you doing that's so great? And what are, what are some areas that as an area superintendent and district central services can do to support you more?
Okay. So, what's our, what's the consensus of what that target is gonna be? What, what was our final word?
Nine targets and an increase in each one of them.
Okay.
That's what I'm understanding.
Go bold. Go big or go home.
No longer do our three-year average, and we'll do the nine targets, and it's not going to be a high-stakes type of a...
Correct. Good. Okay, let's keep going.
So, this is the last sort of ALT indicator that we're gonna talk about. And in the genius of Vanji Russell.
ALT?
Academic Leadership Team. But in the genius of Vanji Russell, the Pro-Tech Administrator of the Year. We began with graduation, and we're gonna end a little bit with pre-K. Okay? And so, this, this, this indicator is all around the expansion of early childhood education programs. Really, what we're talking about are the integrated and inclusionary programs. What you see is our actual number of programs in seventeen eighteen was eighteen. Our target was twenty. And in eighteen nineteen, we had twenty programs. Our target for the current school year minimally is, just to keep pace, is twenty-two. Terms of, of highlights, again, we've expanded our integrated programs. You know, really, part of what is going on here historically, for those who haven't been part of the conversations, is bringing together what before was special education, early childhood, and general education, early childhood, so that we have early childhood education. So, the, the teachers were skilled very differently. And so, there's a lot of effort on having them learn from each other. Kinda like at high school, well, just say that special education teachers are often very steeped in skills on individually working with kids, whereas the general education teachers may have more content knowledge. So, it's bridging those two. And there's a lot of professional learning community work that's been very successful in, in getting that accomplished. We also, there was some reluctance initially from teachers to do kind of this integration. Now, under Tina Springmeyer's leadership, there's actually an interest list of teachers that want the integrated programs. The other day, she did a, she and Victor Sherbandi, I think Victor's still here. They did an amazing presentation to us just around ECE programming. And now, teachers are, they don't know, they would never wanna go back. They wouldn't want to not have integrated programs. So, we're moving in the right direction. One of the big challenges we have within this area is that because of state rules and different funding sources, the time for special education programs is far less than the time for grant-funded programs. And that could end up being a vegetarian issue when you ask what you can do to help. There are a multitude of needs. This is one, if we were to expand the amount of time for special education students, it would come with a, a price tag. As we expand, hiring high-qualified teachers and getting them trained up, that is a challenge. Also, and I think this goes to that professional learning. Tina and the group have sort of implemented very rigorous assessments, classroom observation tools, which is challenging the teachers to get better. But that's the kind of challenge we want as educators. We have strategies in motion, great ongoing collaboration with Debbie's office, in particular, the kindergarten facilitator, especially with respect to transitions from pre-K to kindergarten. The ongoing PLCs, emphasis around STEAM and STEM to support academic learning. Expansion of these social-emotional demonstration sites, so that, sites that are really focused on skill-building of students socially as they move forward. That's where we're at.
Okay. Any questions on this one? I'm just curious, so the metric says successfully expand early childhood education programming, and the metric is around only integrated?
It's primarily around integrated. I can tell you...
Which is great. I mean, I think it's great that we're focusing on integrated. I just, I wanted to make sure we're syncing up the goal and the metric.
Right. And, and that's why we need the operational definitions on here. Because to be perfectly frank, and you know, I inherited this, this area, that was kinda new to me. But I will tell you, we've got ninety-four programs in the district. Forty of them are grant-funded, fifty-four of them are special education programs. And so, another challenge, and you've heard this repeatedly, is those grant-funded programs, that could suddenly come down if state grant funding is decreased. So, this is one where we do all we can, but we also have some dependencies with external agencies that could affect our ability to expand.
Well, I'm just, you know, particularly with regard to the STEAM and STEM professional development for ECE teachers, you know, that doesn't show up in the metric. And we, we're doing some great work. And it was fun to see the teacher at Maxwell the other day, who's teaching robotics and, you know, advanced physics concepts to kindergarten and first graders. So, I just, you know, I, I would challenge us to maybe wordsmith our goal a little bit so we can capture some of those things, or, or else modify our metric. Just, you know, to make sure we're focusing on the right things. The things that we really feel are most important, and we're, and we're counting them. most important and we're and we're counting them. And as as my colleagues have said, you know, giving ourselves credit for the good work that's being done in the metric, so. Okey doke. Let's keep going. Thank you all. You've been sitting a long time and you have really answered some very tough questions, and we are just so grateful and so impressed by the professionalism and the excellence of our team. So kudos to everybody.
I gotta go get a catapult to pumpkin chunkin'.
There you go. There you go. Get your helmet. Thank you all very, very much.
Safety first.
Okay. Yeah, we're, and I'm wondering, should we stop for lunch here? Should we stop and take a lunch break, um, before we start on a, how many do we have on your, on yours? Just, okay. Yeah, it's here, I know. You only have one, so let's go ahead and let you get out of here, Robert.
I love you.
That's all it takes?
Easy, buddy.
Oh, man, that's all it takes.
It's a family show.
And the throngs heard that one, huh? All right. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Robert. One point, three point one.
So now for the record, uh, President Simon Holland, interim Superintendent McNeil, members of the board appreciate, uh, the opportunity to present to you on Initiative One Point Three Point One, Twenty First Century Learning. This is a fairly simple metric around our badge program. And as you can see, we exceeded met and exceeded our target for this year of one hundred and twenty teachers trained. And just a very brief, um, synopsis of what that is, that is a substantial, um, thirty-hour commitment from teachers to, uh, explore, um, the use of technology and innovative practices for, um, teaching and learning. The focus this year was on our new schools, so the vast majority of teachers at our new schools have been trained, um, to use the technologies that are in those schools. Those classes continue to be well-attended, uh, and, um, observations of practice demonstrate that increases in student-centered activities are occurring. Challenges include that, as we all know, um, that we have, um, issues around equity with technology access for our students and for teaching and learning. So, um, as you also know, strategic activity in motion right now is the development of a district strategic technology plan, which we will be bringing an update on to the board on November twenty-sixth. Regarding those, regarding this this particular metric, uh, my recommendation would be that the board consider replacing this metric, um, in the future with metrics or a metric or metrics that are aligned directly to that, um, new district strategic technology plan.
And and hopefully focusing again on outcomes. And but that's great. And the difference, you know, the the drop from one forty-four actual in seventeen eighteen to one thirty-six actual, there are so many things that that contribute to those, um, you know, ability to attend when classes are offered, all of those kinds of things, which is why focusing on outcomes would be better, so. Okay, any questions on this one? Robert will love you if you don't ask a question, so. No. Okay. All right, Robert, you're off the hook.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and we're looking forward to that technology plan on the twenty-sixth, that discussion. Okay, let's, um, go ahead and break for lunch. How long would you like to, um, break for lunch, colleagues? We're not doing the Simon Holland Boot Camp, so. Yes, yeah.
More than ten minutes?
Yeah. Twenty, twenty, twenty-five? What do you want to do?
Let's take twenty, because it's going to be twenty-five anyway.
I'll start looking for you at twenty. Is that the, okay. We will be in recess for about twenty minutes. All right.
Um, and our our target for nineteen twenty, um, because we are still seeing just incremental growth, is is the same as our eighteen nineteen target. We'd like to get to sixty-nine percent. I know, uh, kind of a logical question might be, um, you know, what what do we hope our long-term target to be? And, um, you know, in talking with our our peers in higher education, um, and looking at some of the trends from around the country, I think we're still figuring out long-term what the right number is because, um, this is is this is unique in the way that it's for career changers, if you will. And so there are going to be, um, a number of folks that come into the program thinking that teaching is one thing and then finding out that it's it's something entirely different. Just because you were a student doesn't necessarily mean you, uh, have an appreciation for what it means to be a teacher. So I think, you know, overall, what our goal is, uh, is still kind of TBD, but I expect that we can get to the sixty-nine percent target for nineteen twenty and continue to see incremental improvement. Where that will, uh, top out, I think, is is what's a little bit to be determined. So, um, we have been working really closely in the last few months with the Accountability Office for Program Evaluation, and I'm really excited about the work that's happening there because we've done a lot of focus groups. We've gotten, um, a lot of feedback around how we can take, um, a program that I would say is still in its infancy. We've only been doing this for, uh, four years now. And while we've had some really great accomplishments, we have a lot of really amazing success stories to point to, I think that there's an opportunity for us to take it to the next level and make sure that, you know, not only are we producing the quantity of teachers that we need for hard-to-fill areas, but we want to make sure that we are, um, attending to and ensuring the quality of preparation for those teachers too, so.
Emily, how's our retention rate of those folks? Once they do complete and and get in?
Yeah, it's it's actually been really good. I should have brought those numbers because that is a logical question to ask, so I can certainly, um, follow up with that data. But, um, it is trending better than with traditionally trained teachers. Um, and we also are seeing results in terms of, um, the diversity of of candidates that go through an alternative program versus, um, a traditional teacher prep program, and also an increase in, um, males that are entering the profession through alternative pathway versus traditional pathway.
Great. Okay. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Emily. Um, I love this program. As you know, I'm always sending people.
Yes, thank you for that.
Uh, your way, and your and your team's very good about jumping on and, you know, providing answers and so on. Any any ideas to why the number was so high in sixteen seventeen?
Because the N size was much smaller. So, um, that was one of the first years that we did the program. And, um, while in many situations, having a smaller N size actually changes the dynamic, um, we were very targeted and very focused in who we recruited for those initial groups. And, um, they largely represent people that were already in our system and were were, uh, a little bit further along in the preparation path than in subsequent groups. So, um, on average now, we do two cohorts a year, and those are generally between, um, thirty-five and fifty people per cohort. And so, uh, watching this trend, we've, like I said, implemented some process improvements. And so, um, one of the first bullets there is that we changed the Praxis testing requirements. So one thing that we discovered is that, um, when we allowed people to enter the program and they hadn't completed their Praxis Core testing at the point of entry, there were some folks who got everything done in terms of the internship and the boot camp, and then they couldn't get past the Praxis, so they couldn't get into the pools. So we've changed the process to require that as, um, a prerequisite for entrance into the program. So I think that will continue to boost our numbers too, because they're, once they get through internship and boot camp, then they're ready to be in the pools, so.
Yeah. No question. Mr. Minetto?
I just especially like this because I do not have a degree in education.
Yeah.
I have my bachelor's degree in something else, and then I went back thirty-three years ago, whatever, and, uh, took what I needed to to become a teacher and then did that for thirty-one years.
Yeah.
And so I like this. Thank you.
And I think that when we look at what we know about workforce data and the fact that, you know, for for a couple of generations of workforce now, there's been a lot of, um, data pointing to the fact that, um, you know, people change careers and have multiple careers in their lifetime, we have to have other pathways for people to get into the profession if we, um, you know, if we want to continue to have the number of teachers that we need, because it's not always practical for people to stop what they're doing and do a full internship and, you know, meet some of the traditional prep requirements, so.
Okay. Uh, yes, Mr. Pato?
Thank you. There might, if there's a way to work with the university on this, I think that'd be beneficial, because I know students at the university, they're getting really close to graduation, and they want to be a teacher.
Yeah.
But they don't want to go back and kind of start over and add a couple more years, so they just choose to finish what they're in and graduate. And I think many of them don't really understand that that door's still open for them. They just think, well, I I don't want to go back and do two measures of school, so I I guess I just won't be a teacher. And, um, I think if the if students knew about this here in Washoe, that you you would, I think you would see col, recent college graduates that would maybe go through something like this, just because they don't want to go back through the process of going to college for years.
So whatever you can do to help us connect with more people that are in that situation, we would be glad to, right? So we work with the Career Center, um, we try to connect with the different colleges to, you know, if you're getting a degree in math, right, could we could we tap into those folks to help them become math teachers? Um, one of the, uh, common misconceptions about ARL is that there's not additional, um, education training required. Really what Alternative Routes to Licenseure does is it switches the order in which things happen. And so, um, I always stress to people that you are still going to take coursework, but you'll be kind of in your profession, and you also have the benefit of that on-the-job learning experience. So maybe you and I can connect offline at some point and talk about who I should be talking to.
Yeah, that would be great, because I know the College of Education's did a pretty good job of essentially creating new degrees such as PAC Teach and so that students can pursue the degree they want and still be a teacher. There's a former student of mine who's actually a middle school teacher at Shaw. He did the the PAC Teach and he got his degree in biology, but the PAC Teach tax on the teaching degree.
Yeah.
So he was able to be a science teacher. And the, but the College of Education hasn't been able to impact every department on campus. So there could be quite a few math majors that didn't go through education, they went through the College of Science, and maybe they want to be a teacher, but they don't think that option's available to them. So.
Yeah.
There could be a a market there to tap into potentially.
We've also talked about connecting with the alumni groups, because sometimes people get into their profession and they didn't realize that where their heart actually was was in education. And so how do we help them make that transition to? So, yeah, those are good ideas.
Dr. McNeil?
Just real quickly, as as an example, we didn't call it Alternative Routes to Licenseure when I went back through, but I'm an example of what the.
Yeah.
ARL program can absolutely do. When you decide that, you know, hotel administration, it was great, um, you got your bachelor's of science in it, but your calling is is working with children. But what I really wanted to talk about is we have had conversations with the new Dean of Education, Dr. Easton Brooks, who's a fabulous proponent, actually, of Alternative Routes to Licenseure. And so he is looking for expanded opportunities to help the district bring in more ARL candidates, because it is a niche, uh, for UNR to be able to do that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, they're a great partner.
Okay. Anything else on that one? All right, thank you. Okay.
All right. So two point two point two reflects the combining of two previous strategic plan goals. Um, they were really essentially the same goal, just talking about different employee groups. So there was one for licensed administrators and one for engagement of teachers. Um, we thought that it really made sense to combine those and just say licensed employee engagement through the MyPGS platform. And this goal is really about how many employees are taking advantage of professional up, professional learning opportunities, um, through the MyPGS system. Overall, our eighteen nineteen results were that ninety percent of employees were taking advantage of those opportunities. Um, that is down from seventeen eighteen. I think there are a lot of factors that are contributing to that, although there is still a relatively high level of engagement. Obviously, uh, cuts to resources, right, impact the number of professional learning opportunities that we can offer. A lot of our professional learning is offered by staff, right? And so, um, I know that I've experienced a little bit of this with the boot camp for the ARL program. Instructors who have taught boot camp courses for us year in and year out, um, you know, they love being involved, but they, a couple have had to reach out and say, you know, I've got so much going on right now, I just can't offer this course this semester. Can we get somebody else lined up? Or, you know, can we look at rescheduling for another time? So I think that's a factor. I think that, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, site-based professional learning is happening that might not necessarily be, um, entered into the MyPGS systems. There's still a lot of learning going on, but they didn't necessarily register through MyPGS. There are some changes to, um, licensing requirements that are coming in terms of how you renew your license. And so we'll continue to focus on this and offering as many opportunities as we can, um, as a district to help people meet those requirements. So there's a lot going on. I think this is important data to look at. And we just have to, you know, make sure that we have opportunities available for people to continue to learn and grow. I think Debbie talked a little bit about earlier about the importance of professional learning for us to continue to innovate and be, um, delivering the results that we're hoping to deliver. And, uh, it's a, it's an education piece for our department too, right? So working with, um, the individuals in our district who are delivering professional learning and helping them understand how to get that in the system so that, um, those opportunities can be available to a broader audience.
Okay. Dr. McNeil?
What was the nineteen twenty target?
The nineteen twenty target is a two percent increase, so we're hoping to get to ninety ninety-two percent for nineteen twenty.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? All righty. Keep going.
All right. So two point two point three is the percentage of courses that are followed up with the, um, participant survey. So the course being closed out in the system and the participant survey being completed. So, um, we increased from fifteen percent in seventeen eighteen to thirty-three percent in, um, eighteen nineteen. For nineteen twenty, I would like to shoot for forty percent completion. So, so, um, this is, the the biggest challenge is just, again, education for course creators. And, um, you know, people are doing a lot of things and helping, uh, as much as we can to support them in closing out those classes, finalizing the attendance, and then, uh, that's what prompts the survey to be sent out so that, um, I hope at some point that we have enough of those, uh, surveys going out that we can, um, glean some data about implementation of professional learning opportunities and, um, how that's connecting to the classroom and to student results.
So this is the percentage of people who took a course who gave you any kind of feedback.
Um, this is, this does not reflect the feedback. This reflects, uh, courses that were completed and feedback was sought. So of the courses that were completed, thirty-three percent of those, um, had a survey, a post, a post-completion survey go out in order to gather some data. The percentage of completion of those surveys is even lower, which is why right now we don't have a metric for, um, what those surveys are showing us in terms of data, because the.
It's not representative.
The data is not representative.
Yeah, I'm lukewarm on this, um, metric, just personally. Um, Dr. Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I, um, I I certainly understand why here, because this is where it starts before really, before you can really gather some information, some data that can help you, you know, see, you know, improve the courses and so on. My question on this was really going to be, uh, who 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 are our instructors? Where, you say, it's sometimes, uh, course creators aren't sending out the surveys. Can you talk us through that, how that happens a little bit?
Well, course construct, course instructors are a lot of different people. So, um, they they could be external instructors that we're bringing in, um, but the the system part of it is still handled by district staff. More often than not, it's the district staff that are the course instructors. So, um, for example, some of my staff teach courses on resume development and interviewing and, um, the admin hiring process and, um, uh, but but then a lot of them are teachers and principals and and other district-level administrators. So, um, I think MyPGS has some really great features. This is probably not one of my favorite features, because it's a little bit cumbersome. And so really, um, we're kind of at that place right now where it's all about education for those instructors and making sure that, you know, if you're an instructor today, you know what's expected, but also if you're going to come online as an instructor at some point in the future, that you know what's expected and how to make that happen, so that we can at least get the survey sent out and hopefully get more data back that that we think could get into a metric that is, um, a little more representative of what we're trying to accomplish.
If I, to follow up on this, does the system, My, MyPGS, um, which I can tell is your favorite system that that you're using, um, does it have a way to automatically, you based upon the emails of the of the of the staff members that sign up?
Generate it?
Yeah, to to automatically kick it out, so we aren't really dependent upon the course careers?
So it does, but it requires that the, um, the attendance be finalized. And so I think that's the loop, right? You go and you you teach a class and and, uh, you you wrap up, let's say it's a four-section class, because many of our our classes are more than just a one-touch opportunity. Um, so it's a four-section class, so you, now you've got an attendance sheet for each of those classes, and you've got to go back in, you've got to plug in all the information, and you've got to close out the attendance. And you've got to go back in, you've got to plug in all the information, and you've got to close out the attendance. And then that's the point at which it happens automatically. So I think it's that administrative component, especially for classes that are more than one section. Um, that becomes a little bit burdensome for staff because they're doing a lot of other things too.
Okay. So the, I, I absolutely appreciate the intent, which is so that we can continuously improve. Um, for me, this is, this is a, you know, not a strategic plan level. Um, you know, it's an activity. Um, and, and I do understand that unless we ask for, did you implement, we're not going to get information about that. Um, I think it's, you know, it's valuable to us to know of the people who did respond and give feedback, how many of them are implementing. Um, and I do understand it's challenging to get people to give you the feedback. And you don't want to be basing things on, on a very small sample that's not representative. But I, I'm just, um, you know, I think this is probably a tactical level, you know, metric that's within your, you know, your department. But not necessarily rising to the level of a strategic plan. Um, but just, that's just one, one point of view.
Well, I think that's a valid point, and I think just to give a little context too. So when the strategic plan was being developed, MyPGS was in um, its infancy. In terms of what it was capable of as a system and how we were utilizing it. And we were still doing a lot of the teacher incentive fund work around um, you know, coaching and mentoring and all of that. And so I think now that we have um, you know, uh, some years of experience under our belt, I think you're absolutely right. This is a very tactical goal. Um, I think the next phase of this to get at what we really hope to understand, which is can we make a connection between professional learning and, and student outcomes? Is, I, I think it's really going to come down to qualitative analysis, right? So I think that's me and, and um, Ben's group working together to figure out, how do we get at that? Survey data is great, right? We still need that for instructor feedback and everything. But when it comes to, again, drawing that connection between the learning and the outcomes, I think we're going to have to try and figure out a way to do some um, you know, program evaluation on an annual basis. That's a little bit more qualitative than quantitative.
Yeah, 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 next, next round, yeah.
Yeah.
Food for thought, yes.
I, I, I would agree that this isn't something I think we want to track. I mean, something that is, that would, that I would be interested in, in is two things. One is probably at your level as well is, how, how, how do people enjoy the class? Are they getting anything out of that? I mean, that, that's something that, again, I don't, that's not for our level, but something.
Is it useful? It's still important, yeah.
Exactly, is it useful?
This is something we should keep doing.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, you know, if it's something people aren't enjoying, they aren't getting the information, isn't relevant, whatever, any of those things I think would be helpful. Um, and then maybe it's a, it's a post, that might be a post, right after the class, you know, what do people think about it? Right, then was it good, all those things? And then maybe this, uh, what we're really want to get to, if they're using anything, that might be what they call, you know, that might be the, a post-post. That might be six months down the line, or three months down the line. Hey, are you using anything from the class?
Now, I think that's a great point.
To me, that, are you using anything, is, is, I think we're, what would be more helpful is, man, are these, and then we can see if they're using something. And then we can see, okay, they should have some impact on their teaching, on their success, or, you know, some kind of indirect connection, perhaps of student achievement.
Christine Minado, did you have something?
Maybe in the olden days, I don't know. Uh, we got the, the ticket out was you filled out that survey.
Right, the paper survey.
And so they took the last twenty minutes and you filled out that survey. And now they do it online, which it's really easy to delete.
I, I suspect there's still some paper surveys happening in classrooms. Because instructors want that immediate feedback, right? And like I said, there's a, a little bit of a process uh, to get it electronically. So I, I think this is one, um, and, and there's a couple in my area, right? When it comes to these strategic plan goals, that I think we have an opportunity to revisit now that we have uh, a better understanding of what we're trying to measure. And um, how we might get at that data a little bit differently.
Okay, so uh, food for the next round, food for thought for the next round. Okay, let's keep going then.
All right.
Teacher retention.
So teacher retention, um, the goal is to increase teacher retention over the first five years. And so we look at this on uh, what I think of as a, a rolling cohort, right? So if we take five years' worth of new hires, how many total new hires did we have? And then in the sixth year of that five-year cohort, how many of those do we still have? And so um, we're seeing incremental improvement, again, like uh, almost at the same rate that the ARL dat- uh, data showed earlier. Um, I'd like for our nineteen twenty target to remain the eighteen nineteen, I'd like to get to seventy-five percent. Um, I think that a lot of the work that's being done right now is really important for this um, this metric, of course, right? We know that employee satisfaction plays a huge role in um, teacher retention. I think some of the wins and, and some of the reasons that um, we're trending in the right direction have to do with professional learning, like we've talked about a little bit before, right? We have a, a really um, robust uh, new teacher um, academy uh, to support new teachers in their first two years of working. Um, I think something that is lacking and, and is an area of focus for, for me in this role and that we've been working on, um, we have a, a task force uh, of stakeholders from throughout the district. So not just for certified, but for employee retention in general, is onboarding, right? And so that's the, that's the concept, not orientation. Orientation is very task-focused, like fill out your I-9 and make sure we're deducting your taxes and do all your, you know, um, direct deposit paperwork. But onboarding is more about defining who we are as an organization for our employees. And helping to um, bring people into the fold early and quickly and get them integrated into our culture. And get them engaged in the work that they're doing and our work, uh, our mission as an organization. And so um, I am excited about the work that the task force has done so far, right? They've taken a really uh, critical look at um, some of our processes that, that might be a, a barrier to effective onboarding. And so the next phase for us would be to work with our um, leadership team to say, here's an onboarding toolkit that can be used in any area. Here's some best practices related to the things that need to be attended to during onboarding. So for example, you know, um, uh, an employee needs to understand what evaluation looks like and what the, what their career development opportunities are. And um, be introduced to the, you know, culture and of your department and your school, bless you. Um, and so we want to provide some guidance to our leaders in terms of the milestones that are critical as a part of an onboarding process. Give them some best practices and then leave some room for customization and support from HR um, in order to help um, compile an onboarding program. That is not only uh, district level, but uh, department or, or site-specific too. So I think um, that's something that I really believe will continue to move the needle. Um, in addition to, you know, the work that we're doing about employee morale and, and a lot of the um, reflective activities that are happening right now as a system.
Trustee Cotto?
I was just wondering if um, throughout the students' uh, experience as a student-teacher, if the, what kind of experiences they're put through? Uh, and if, you know, when they deal with some difficult situations, because a lot of times new teachers just get overwhelmed. Maybe they don't really understand what it's going to be like. Is trying to create that experience to be as authentic as possible, given the restrictions? Then also the support to help them deal with those situations? Because, and then speaking to a few student teachers or teachers that were student-taught, it was student teaching was this, and then teaching for real is this. And I understand it's not going to be the exact same, but getting it closer so that when they're done student teaching, they really want to be a teacher?
Yeah.
Or it's, they don't really understand what it's going to be like when they get in the classroom essentially by themselves. That's a, wow, what is happening right now?
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know what the process is right now, and what student teachers go through and what our district um, policy is on that. But trying to make it as close to the real thing as possible, so that they, A, experience it, and then B, can have that support around them. To help them deal with that in a controlled environment before they're in the classroom for real, by themselves, without the, the mentor above them.
Right.
So to speak.
I think you make a great point. I think that student teaching is so, so critical. And what we do during that experience really can make or break, right? Um, I had a lot of thoughts while you were talking, I'm trying to decide where best to start. So um, nationwide, there really is a movement to have the student teaching experience look more like a residency for a doctor, right? Because there's so much variety um, from class to class and year to year and, you know, um, right now it's a sixteen-week experience, I believe. Um, but I think we have an opportunity to work with our higher ed partners to say, how do we get to a place where it looks more like a residency? And I think um, we need NDE support for that, I think we need our higher ed partner support, I think we need district support. I think we probably need uh, you know, federal and state money to help make that happen, right? Because right now, an unpaid sixteen-week internship is a significant hardship for people. And so if you, if you stretch it out, we've got to figure out a way to make that doable. Otherwise, people will be like, I can't become a teacher. So I think that's one thing. Um, so that's kind of what we should aspire to, or what we could aspire to. Um, in the, in the short term, we are working on a project right now, actually, we're so fortunate to get some Title II money to support this work. Um, and we're working really closely with um, College of Ed, John Anini, and the, in the student, I don't know, it's, this is not his official title, but the Student Intern Office, that's what I'm going to call it. Um, to do what we're calling a model, a model, model lead teacher, that was called, yeah, model lead teacher, master lead teacher program. And what that is, is a cohort of um, teachers who have demonstrated uh, you know, high-quality teaching and high-quality mentorship. Um, and who have, who have committed to taking on interns um, semester over semester. And then we're giving them additional professional learning opportunities around what it means to be a really amazing lead teacher. And how do we, you know, what, what should that experience look like? What, what things do we need to make sure are covered? How, how do you um, effectively transition your um, your student-teacher from observing to co-teaching? To stand alone with support, to being on their own, right? And demonstrating um, demonstrating proficiency. And so we're really excited about that work, that's something that we're just starting um, this year, we just got the funding for it. Um, but that's a collaboration with RPDP and um, Teachers Offices of Academics, uh, HR. And so I feel like, I feel like in the, until we can get to the residency model, um, building the capacity of our mentor-teachers is where we should really focus a lot of time and energy. Because we want to make sure that, you know, whether, whether you get me, or you get Kristen, or you, or you get Ellen as your um, mentor-teacher, that you have a consistent experience. That covers the types of things you need to be ready for when you get into the classroom. Can we get to everything? Probably not, because there's going to be those really strange things, right? I, I was at Donner Springs one day before Sarah went to RPDP, and she was talking about how there was a snake in the building, right? We're not going to be able to cover everything, but I think we can cover the really big, important things, right? So that they feel more prepared when they get into the classroom on their own.
Yeah, I think it o- offers the opportunity for them to be better teachers, but also have real expectations of what it's like to be a teacher. And then the staff around them can build them up, and their confidence that this is what it's like, but y- you can do this. And not, maybe not really understand what it's like, and then be on their own, and then they're going through their first year going, I don't know if I can do this.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, there's no guarantee it's going to impact this, but I, I definitely think it's going to help.
Yeah.
Um, especially give them confidence to get through, because once you keep, get through that, this threshold, you're generally okay. But getting here, a lot of it's confidence, if you don't think you can do it and you get overwhelmed, you're probably just going to flame out.
Yeah.
It's not, it's like that for everything, but especially for teachers.
Yeah, I think you make some really great points. Um, one of the other things that I wanted to mention was working with Joe um, and the College of Ed. Uh, they've, they've recently made a change requiring that students get their substitute teaching license um, as they enter the College of Ed. And so you'd be surprised, um, the number of, of individuals in teacher prep programs who really haven't spent a lot of time in classrooms, other than being a student when they were, you know, in school. Um, and so uh, I believe that will help too, right? I, the more time you're spending in a classroom during your teacher prep program and, and, you know, getting all of that instruction and those concepts, and then being able to see them in practice. And having good practicum mentors during that experience, I think you're right, will help prepare them for what they can expect when they're on their own.
Dr. McNeil?
So this was actually one of the sessions that I facilitated uh, back in Louisville, when we went to the Council of Great City Schools. And there are more and more institutions, four-year institutions, that are partnering with school districts for that residency-type program. Because what they're seeing is that the benefits pay off five years down the road with larger increases in teacher retention. Um, because the teacher feels very supported, they feel ready to go, they feel well-prepared with that longer amount of time. But the interesting thing was, is more and more school districts um, are starting to put within their budget lines, help and support with paying for the internship, for the student-teaching experience there. And then just really quickly, Emily, is there a way that we can actually disaggregate? Because this is, this is a big metric, and there's a lot in those percentages. But is there a way that we can look at disaggregating this as far as levels, especially with the differences in licensing requirements now?
Oh, yeah.
But are you able to see elementary, secondary?
Oh, yeah.
And then special education, early childhood?
Mm-hmm.
And then I would even go as far as gender, and seeing what those trends are? Just a thought.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Good. And Emily, I see that from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, there was a huge jump. Have we kind of dissected what happened then that contributed to that really significant progress?
We did when we reported seventeen eighteen, and it escapes me now what it was, but I will get back to you.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure you did, and I, and you, you don't need to get back to me, but I just hope we're incorporating, how did we do that? And what can we replicate uh, and build on? Vice President Raymond?
I'm sorry, I got, and all the conversation forgot. So what's the goal for twenty twenty?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five again, okay.
Yes, please.
Anyone else on this one? Well, we, we know that it's very important. We also know that um, continuity within schools is important. Uh, that we, we not only want to keep folks in the district, but we, we like to keep the teams together, at least for a, a core period of time. Because we know that, that the kids do better when there is a, an alignment and a feeling of continuity. So um, this is a, this is important for us, oh, bless you. Oh, that little tiny woman. Troy, did you get anything on you that? And, and here, I've been sneezing all day, so I, you know, I, I take it. Okay, Andrew, yes.
I do have one, one additional question. Um, I think I was one that asked this the last time we met about the strategic plan. If there's a way to measure satisfaction of student-teachers, if they, if they choose to seek employment elsewhere as a teacher and choose not to stay here? A, a way to measure their reasoning, it could be that they just want to go back home because they're from California. But um, I personally think it'd be important for us to know that if our student-teachers from the University of Nevada are seeking teaching jobs elsewhere, I think it's good to know why. Because if it's anything to do with their experience, that's something that we should look at. There's some factors we can control, some we can't. But I think if we are losing student-teachers to other districts because of things we can control, it's something we would want to look at. Because we want to keep them home, especially if we do go the route of investing into internships. We would like for them to take a job here and not, we do, we put all that reas, those resources in, and then they go to Douglas and get a teaching job. And so it's just something that we might want to look into down the road.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, I do remember having that conversation. I think we pulled some initial data just to see what the percentages were. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head, but let me dig a little bit deeper and see what we can find in terms of the why. I, I think anecdotally, right, but just based on my experience with um, the last few years of, of student-teacher cohorts. Um, more often than not, it's probably that they're, you know, from Lyon County, or they're from Douglas County. And so they come here and then end up going back home. But um, I think, I, it's certainly something that we want to look at, because you're right, we don't want to make the investment and then lose them to other places, so.
And I know we do get some uh, teachers out of the Sierra Nevada College program. And are, are we doing the same um, relationships with them, the same programs with them?
So this is a pilot program for the, the Master Lead Teacher Project with UNR. Um, and we, we all kind of went in together to help secure this funding. Um, but I definitely would like to expand because um, Sierra Nevada is a part, an important part of our pipeline, Western Governors, and then also Grand Canyon University are all really important to us.
Okay, good, okay, well, let's keep, keep moving then, thank you, that was a good discussion.
All right. So this last metric is probably the one that creates the most confusion in the strategic. So this last metric is probably the one that creates the most confusion in the strategic plan. This, this is satisfaction with human resources, and um, I don't, I don't have the history how that came to be a strategic plan metric, but I think we have an opportunity during the next round to come up with a, a different satisfaction metric that does not reflect just human resources satisfaction.
Well, we, yeah, we took it off the superintendent's evaluation, but um...
But we didn't have the follow-up work session to figure out what we wanted this one to be, so.
Right.
Uh, so we, we know we're headed in that direction.
Yeah.
Um, uh, this will, of course, be something that I continue to monitor and, and find value in the data, and more importantly, the comments, right? Because they often provide some really important insights. Um, overall, continuing to see improvements. I think that, you know, like everyone has experienced, resource reductions, impact service levels, and so almost always, the feedback is, you know, related to, to a service level, um, customer service timing, if you will, right? Like, I always get voicemail, or uh, it took, it took two days to get a phone call back instead of one, and those are things that we definitely want to continue to improve, um, because we want to be responsive to, to the needs of our employees. And so um, I think what the metric looks like moving forward uh, is a little bit TBD as we go through the strategic plan process, but I think there are employee satisfaction metrics that we can report on um, in the next, in the next iteration of this plan.
Yep, that are not specific to one department.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we need to spend a lot more time on that one, so.
That's everything for me.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
All right, the transportation team is up.
Thank you, Emily.
And thank you to you and your team for the very great responsiveness and the hard work, cuz the, the trends are continuing to show progress in a very difficult market, so.
All right, so we're gonna bring the whole team up to do for the next nine operations. And just wanted to lead off with a couple things really quickly. Oh, by the way, Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer, for the record. So I really enjoyed the discussion this morning when it came to student achievement, because I think it's in operations, it's oftentimes important to remind ourselves that everything that we do, whether it's uh, feeding students, or transporting students, or providing students, you know, clean, safe, adequate classrooms, um, it's all focused towards student achievement. And one thing I never wanna take for granted, and we're very blessed, I think, in this district, and it's not nationwide, cuz I wanna talk to other superintendents or other COOs, is that we have an amazing communication here between academics and operations, and I think we're very fortunate for that, and I think it's one of the reasons that we can achieve so much as a district. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump into our metrics, and we're starting off with transportation. Good afternoon, for the record, Rick Martin, Director of Transportation. And our first metric of the day is on-time delivery of students, and uh, we have seen a increase in that. Uh, and just so you know what our, our definition of on-time delivery of students, cuz there is not a nationwide definition of that. We've had many, many conversations, and it could be anywhere as far as ten minutes late to school, uh, you know, which we don't agree with. So ours is five minutes before any scheduled event, so that's our definition.
Wow.
Okay. So, we're currently, this last year, we had ninety-five point nine percent. We've seen a steady increase on that, and for the on-time delivery, we have uh, faster response time to adjusting routes and route times, and anticipating construction projects. Uh, not that we have many in the Reno Sparks area, but just those that do come up. Uh, improved monitoring and delivery models through overlays of runs showing built, and basically, we're working with uh, anticipated construction projects, and uh, working with county mapping and, and that like a thing. Those, those types of tools to help us be better to route for the future and anticipate those types of issues. So, from that standpoint, we've uh, we've continued to improve, and we're looking to continue to do so this year, but uh, we do anticipate that there is still going to be increased traffic and uh, in and around the Reno Sparks area, congestion, obviously uh, higher population standards in, or higher population uh, occupancy in the area, which has put more cars on the road. And then, of course, the new school openings and rezoning are, uh, have some of their own challenges uniquely to start the year, as we found out with a couple of the schools this year, uh, just cuz of uh, infrastructure.
And Rick, I think I speak for everyone here, that we are so grateful uh, to you and your department, and the entire team, for the work that you do to get our kids safely to school on time. The, I mean, the fact that you could be improving on a ninety-four and a half percent uh, on-time arrival, with the shortage of bus drivers, with the new schools, with the growth in this area, um, it's just really a testament to the dedication of uh, the entire team, and um, we're just very grateful for it. So, uh, thank you. It's, I, I am stunned. I'm just stunned that you can produce these results.
Well, you're gonna be stunned even a little bit more, cuz our, our goal is ninety-six point five percent for next year, so. So, moving forward. So, it's amazing what you could do with Uber and Lyft. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, what, and, and I guess, you know, how are you going to, how are you going to get there with the bus driver shortage? I mean...
We are uh, continuing to work on it. Actually, I have some good news in that area. Uh, we just had a, a, an event on Monday, and we had thirty-eight people come in, fill out applications.
Great.
And then in addition, we picked up another twenty-six online.
Wow.
So, now that does not mean that that will all translate into bus driver. I would love it if that all translated into bus drivers, but, but...
But at least you're getting the incoming, if you will.
Right, and we interviewed nineteen that day during the, during the event, and uh, then uh, interviewed another six or seven Tuesday, and continued through the week. So we've interviewed the majority of those folks in that short period of time. We have offered about twenty-five of them at this juncture, so.
That's great, that's great.
So...
And how short are we?
Uh, we are short about thirty-two, thirty-three, not counting people out on L, yeah, not, not counting people out on LOAs and things like that, yeah, but...
Wow, that's remarkable.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's remarkable.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you. You know, I think a lot of efforts with uh, human resources and communications have been integral for us, to, to get the message out and get that information.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna say that, real, a big kudos to the communication team um, on that, because I saw that information everywhere.
Yeah.
They did an excellent job, yeah.
When there was, when there was the job fair, I, I saw it everywhere. It's like, wow, this is, so just a really good, so good, good job.
Awesome.
Any other questions on this one?
No.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right, um, safety decrease accidents per a hundred thousand miles. Our goal has always been a point nine-nine percent, so it's just a little bit under one accident per a hundred thousand miles. Unfortunately, it's, we've never really attained that, because we have a very stringent standard as to what an accident is. Um, any type of incident involving a bus coming in contact with anything, um, just another mirror tap, two buses coming out of the loading zone, and, and one mirror, one bus just comes close enough to tap the mirror on another bus with their mirror. We, we have a stringent policy about how we retrain and what the, what the consequences are. It's more just for awareness and those types of things, but it's very, very stringent. So when we talk about those types of things, we actually really have uh, very few major-type accidents. You know, they're mostly minor, there are the mirror taps, crossing arms, getting caught, um, bumper taps, two, two buses in a loading zone, and one just kinda rolls up and taps the bumper of the other one. Um, those types of things. But obviously, those are things that we also have to be very cognizant of, so that they don't turn into major problems when they're on the road, so. So when you look at that, we do have that type of situation. We, and we use a, a, a metric system similar to Denver, where they have kind of a tiered issue. So they have uh, incidents that are kind of more minor like those, and then something a little bit stronger, and so they go an A, B, and C system. C being a major system, or you're a major accident, where you, you've had damage, there's a, you know, uh, other vehicles involved, there might be injuries, those types of things. So we have been very fortunate from that standpoint, that we have not had those. But even with that, our accidents have decreased over the years, um, basically, because even with the new driver, or even with the driver shortage, and new trainees coming in and the like, uh, the training system has been very, very good in getting them back, uh, if they have an issue, getting back through the process, working with them, getting them uh, reestablished, and whatever their uh, one deficiency might be in that area, and bringing them up to speed. So uh, it's, we've been very proud of that, and we're gonna continue to do that. Our, our metric for next year, since the point nine-nine is a bit aggressive, uh, our, our goal for next year is one point two-nine, uh, so, and go from there, cuz I think we would be, we'd meet point nine-nine by about twenty fifty, but, so, we'll go from there.
Hey, we're being bold today, but, that's, and again, thank you. It's a tough job being a bus driver. I can't even, can't say enough about how hard that job is with the, you know, I mean, thinking about daylight savings time changing this weekend, and Monday morning, and, and then it'll probably snow next week, just, you know, to, yeah. Yeah. I don't have any inside information on that. I'm just being sympathetic.
You know, I appreciate that. I appreciate your sympathy.
Yeah, you know who to blame if it snows. Yeah, no, but I, I just, I am in awe of the dedication of the folks that do that every day for our, what do we have, twenty-plus thousand children that we transport? How many?
Yeah, about a li- little under twenty thousand, you know, because of the walk-zone increases, that, that took it down a little bit, but still, still a large contingent of students every day. When I tell other districts that, and they, I mean, they don't even have that many students in their district, so, you know, so...
And has the walk-zone issue quieted down a bit, or is that still a?
It, it has quieted down. You know, people have accepted it. We still get an inquiry now and then, but it's not quite what it was.
Yeah.
So...
I also wanna compliment you on um, your responsiveness, your department's responsiveness, and yours personally. When an issue is pointed out to you by a parent, or someone on the board, uh, we've heard of a, of an issue, um, how responsive you are to saying, hey, let's take a look at this, let's fix this, we've got too many kids at this bus stop, and we're pushing them out into the street, and it's a danger, and you, you have been on the spot every time, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And as we've, I've said before, recovery is a big word that we use in our division, and uh, so we react quickly to those types of things.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay.
All right.
Cost.
Cost, all right. All right, um, the, our goal was four fifty. We actually came in at forty, four eighty-one, uh, even though we were lower the year before. Um, we have seen some savings with our propane fuel um, over the diesel, and the decrease in overall mileage from the previous year has helped a little bit in this area, and reduced cross-zone transportation for programs. But there has been an overall increase to fuel, parts, employee salaries, and benefits over the last uh, year, year and a half. Uh, as you can see, the increase in fuel costs has been about four percent, or four cents per mile. Increase in parts and labor has been about nine, nine cents per mile, which is added to that increase. So um, those are the, the issues that we've been up against, uh, and we anticipate that that will continue for next year, uh, as the fuel prices continue to fluctuate, which does affect the parts and uh, the labor aspects of that. So um, we anticipate that uh, we're, we're still gonna be aggressive in our, what our goal is, for next year will be four dollars and seventy cents, but um, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a challenge to try to meet those things, just because of some things that we don't have any control over, so.
If I'm doing my math right, that's, that's only like a two and a half percent increase? Is that, am I doing that right? Anyway, it's not much.
No, it's not, it's not a lot from what it was last year, but still...
Given how much everything else has increased, the index has gone up.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. It's, it, and, and we do work very hard to monitor, we are, you know, we work uh, with the contracts that are out there for fuel and things like that. We're always looking at what our best option, our best opportunities are. Same thing with pricing for parts, uh, and the like. Uh, we try to minimize our labor as, aspects. If we can do it in-house, uh, we do, as opposed to vendoring it out. Um, we've got some very talented mechanics in our, uh, in our employ, and we're actually gaining some more, so that's a good, good thing for us.
That's great.
So from that standpoint, we are uh, continuing to try to find ways to work within our own means, uh, to try to improve these costs, and try to keep those costs down.
And what's the goal for nineteen twenty, I'm sorry?
Four, four dollars and seventy cents.
Four seventy, okay. Wow, that's, that's bold, okay.
Just real quick, Rick, is the, is the reduction in the mileage because of the walk-zone?
Yes, correct, it was. Also, the other aspect of that is uh, Special Needs has been very um, progressive on doing a better job with their programming for cross-zone transportation, so that has also helped in that respect, so.
Rick, is, um, are, are salaries included in that cost per mile?
Correct, they are.
Wow. And to be able to have that small of an increase, that's very, very amazing. Okay, any others on, on those? Okay, thank you. And again, just our hats off to everybody in your team. All right, four point one, point three facilities. Mr. Adam?
Yes, good afternoon. Adam, Sierra City Chief Facilities Management Officer. Um, we're gonna start off, we've got three metrics as well, to, you know, try and describe the facilities management department's impacts. Um, starting off, decreased facility and site repair critical needs. And we've talked about this um, facility condition index many times, um, as it relates to um, the prioritization of our capital renewal program. Basically, we have a team of individuals who regularly inspect and maintain a database of all of the school district's facility assets. It's extremely valuable to uh, the organization, and our department in particular, that we know what we have and where we have it, how old it is, and what the likely cost to replace it is. Wanna just clarify, the first bullet under the challenges, um, when we talk about the total uh, critical repair needs, that's the value of assets who, according to industry standards relative to the, to the asset, have exceeded their useful life. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that they are no longer functioning well, or may not function well for many, many years. We internally subdivide that um, into assets that are, you know, no longer repairable, or are, you know, just beyond their useful life. They're on a watch list, so to speak, like, this could break, and then we're gonna have problems, anyway.
Like this building, for example.
Yep, she's still running pretty well, but uh...
Yes, yeah.
By the book, uh, it's beyond, beyond its useful life. Have many assets um, in that category, as indicated by that dollar amount. Um, also wanna point out the two distinctions, overall buildings and overall site. You know, when I mentioned, uh, we, we take this database and use it to help us prioritize our efforts on a basis of worst-first. We think that's very important and valuable to the community, that we're not playing favorites, we're not following some other subjective trends. It's truly prioritized by need, um, and in alignment with kind of our core mission, we're investing greater, with greater urgency and intensity into our buildings than we are our sites. You'll see that in our parking lots, and in our playgrounds. Um, we keep things safe, and we keep things as well-maintained as we can, but we are investing um, repair efforts into our buildings at a greater pace. You can see the trend actually went upwards this last school year. We will be turning that around, um, it's just a really big ship, and we're playing catch-up. So at the bottom, you can see um, the investment per year has increased dramatically with the passage of WC1 to a forty million dollar a year capital renewal program. That will definitely be moving this needle in the right direction. Um, however, those projects take time to execute, to close out, to cycle back into the system. You know, some of the projects that were approved in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen are only now being fully completed, et cetera. Meanwhile, our assets are continuing to age, and exceed their life cycle, et cetera. We also um, not really noted on, explicitly on this slide, the continued diligence by staff related to upkeep and management of the database. One big ticket item that was added to the database in the last year or so are uh, IT infrastructure assets. So not our devices, but our servers, and major, um, you know, major IT hardware in our facilities. You know, this is a, a hardware component of our facilities, just like electrical and things like that. It, it belongs in this database. We are investing in renewal through our capital renewal program in those assets, but it, you know, increased the total value um, like, of the denominator. So, you know, we do uh, have a goal for next school year, nineteen twenty, of uh, point one six. We feel this is going to begin to start to move in the right direction as these projects are completed, and will continue to move in the right direction as we add new facilities, entirely new facilities, to uh, the database. entirely new facilities, to the database. Those are obviously brand-new and have a low, that, that will contribute to moving this metric in the right direction. And hopefully eventually obtain sort of a cost-effective equilibrium, right? We, we may not strive for the good condition rating as they do, you know, a similar exercise maybe to pavement, that you can achieve that, but maybe you're over-investing perhaps. So the sweet spot, under 0.1, we're moving in that direction, hoping, planning for 0.16 next school year.
So less poor.
Well, better.
Yeah, better. Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay. And again, amazing, amazing amount of work being done by the capital facilities team. Just can't, can't even believe it. So very, very deeply appreciative of the work that everybody's doing to, to make this happen. Okay.
Thank you. So this is more on the, the major project side. This next one, decreased number of schools over maximum, maximum capacity. This is a tricky one that we broke down in a few different ways to try and tell the whole story, rolling the entire district up into a single number sometimes is problematic. So I won't go through all the breakdowns exactly, but as everyone is well aware, we're actively constructing new permanent capacity. So we're dramatically seeing this move in the positive direction. Some of the reduction in 1718s, a function of the increased class sizes, which if you're just looking at it as a percentage of maximum capacity, that changes that equation. It looks, it, it decreases the total number of schools that are over maximum capacity. The, you know, it's worth noting, there is actually an admin reg that define the capacity utilization, the preferred utilization ranges. It varies from grade level to grade level. Elementary, middle and high function differently, as you all know, and, you know, function better at different levels from one school to the next. So, but again, just to try and roll it up into one number, you're over 100% of your rated capacity, that's a problem.
Yeah.
That is, that is a problem. And we have portable classrooms, every school is different, how the school program, uh, schedules their program is unique. But if you're over 100% capacity, that's a problem. So in school year 1920, we obviously opened three new schools. We also, the final bullet on this slide, are working really hard with the zoning advisory committee to help use that new capacity in a healthy way and in many cases, kind of rebalance some of the facility utilization. So that's, that's actually been a really good committee and a good process, I think, that's helped us relieve some areas of over capacity. So next school year 1920, our, our goal, our anticipated number of schools over maximum capacity is 14.
Wow.
And we're going to be likely continuing to bring that down relatively quickly as we continue to open new schools.
It's still a lot to the families who have students that are in those, but great job, really good job. And great, great progress. And it's certainly what we promised and, and you all are delivering, so thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Just to round it out, facilities management department also oversees housekeeping and custodial. So this is a more well-established metric that our housekeeping division has had a fairly standardized inspection program, where not only through training and, you know, procedural tra, best practices, but actually going in and inspecting the work that is done. There's a rigorous checklist and, and they actually come up with scores related to cleanliness. So this is, this is a fairly stable metric that's primarily, you know, we're always striving for improvement and, you know, whether it's techniques or products, you know, are seeing areas of improvement. But, you know, as with many of our operations departments struggling with staffing levels and vacancies, things like that. So, you know, just to highlight, we also, you know, put the integrated pest management training on the bottom. That's a new policy that we're, I think, bringing to the board here next week, the board pol, or the policy committee. Things like that, that the housekeeping department executes. But maintaining a 97% target for school year 1920 is our goal. And just working hard to make sure that we have full staffing levels and maintain the same rigorous training program and executing that, that we have.
I'm sorry, and that 97% means the average score district-wide?
That's right. This is the average score district-wide. It's a, you know, several dozen sort of checkpoints that they're basically giving a score out of 10 in many cases. So, yeah, they do quite well and it's, it's, it's a consistency thing, you know? It's an established program, training, they know how to do and what to do it. And, you know, there's, there's always room for improvement, there's always hot spots. But having this foundation keeps them in a pretty high-performing status.
And I, I do have to say, and I'm sure it's true for all the trustees, all of the schools that I visit are clean and they are being well-kept. And it's just tremendous, the effort that that takes with 64,000 children pounding them every day. So very impressive, really much appreciated.
I really need to thank the board on that, too, because even during, before WC1, when we were facing critical overcrowding, we never compromised on our schools being clean. Because I saw a lot of overcrowded school districts where they let their schools go into district repair. We didn't do that. And obviously, a clean school keeps our kids, you know, healthy. And so, thanks to the board for that.
Well, thanks to the commitment of the, the team. Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Cersei? All right, Liaka.
Good afternoon, Liaka Solis, Director of Nutrition Services. Let's see.
Welcome.
So, we will just jump right in with our very first metric here, which is to increase breakfast participation. So as you can see, it's pretty, it's, it's held pretty steady at about 24% over the past couple of years. We saw a little dip last year, about a half of a percent dip. And we had a lot of, a lot more delayed starts last year, too, and we're thinking that that caused some of it. You know, so we saw lunch, which we'll get to next, you'll see was a little bit more steady, but we saw that little dip there, you know, weather. And I, I wasn't here for the school year 1617, but I've been told that was also a difficult winter year for us. So definitely weather does impact especially breakfast. And just making sure that, you know, that our students are, you know, there on time and able to actually, you know, take the breakfast meal. So looking at some things that have kind of helped us sustain, you know, we're always looking at new menu items and different promotions that we can do. We've done some investments in equipment and technology. And looking forward for this school year, 1920, definitely the transition to going from two to 40 CEP schools is really, should be helping our numbers, and it is already. So our target actually for school year 1920 for breakfast is 25%. So we're looking to go at least a percent and a half up.
That's great.
With that. Some challenges that we faced, staff shortages, like everybody else. And especially with breakfast, some limited, you know, meal service times and access to the breakfast meal. And so what I mean by that is, I mean, life happens, right? Sometimes, you know, if we have, you know, transportation is a little bit late, that could impact it. We also have some schools that limit breakfast, or students that come into the building to only those students who are having breakfast. And so when that happens, and sometimes kids would rather kind of stay with their friends.
Yeah, play with their friends, yeah.
And so, and we, we don't offer breakfast in all of our schools yet either. And so that's another thing that we, we look at every year. Where can we grow our breakfast programs? So that's some strategic activities that we're doing to improve, again, the CEP transition. So breakfast in the classroom is a huge help for us. We're still meeting with students constantly and we'll ask, you know, what do you want to see at breakfast? And meeting with administration at the schools that don't serve breakfast to see if they'd be interested in piloting, you know, a grab-and-go station or something like that. Staffing's still an issue for us, you know, so we really have to weigh out, you know, how, where do we pull staff from to start up some of these breakfast programs? So we try to work with the administration and come up with some solutions at those schools. Also, kitchen refreshes, so we've invested in kind of refreshing some of the kitchens and equipment-wise, with speed of service that helps with, in the morning, which is important as at lunch. And then our central kitchen renovation and expansion. And that's going to help because when we're able to be more efficient in our production and distribution, then we're able to take the resources that we save there and put them back into, whether it's food quality or options, you know, different staffing needs, equipment needs. So again, the, the kitchen expansion is going to be huge for us. It's going to allow us to be much more efficient with our processes, which again, will let us reinvest into our program. Sorry, any questions on breakfast?
No, that's good, that's good. Yes, Angie, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think this is directly towards breakfast, but just as a whole, we're, we've been doing some school stuff this week. And one of the parents asked about if there's ever an opportunity for taste testing of the, of any of our meals with breakfast. She spoke of both actually breakfast and lunch, to see. And I don't know if we do that. I know we, we spoke before about, we, we shared that we know you do surveys, and really that the rating is, would be better than she expected. But will you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We do a couple of different things. We, at all of our student advisory committee meetings, there is a tasting portion of it. So the meeting is kind of set up to do, the first half of it is, we present two to three potential new menu items to the students and get their feedback on that. And then we go into just feedback on what they're currently being served and what they'd like to see change or continue. And we do a stop, start, continue kind of model with them for it. We also do tasting anytime we have a new menu item. So we will encourage our cafeteria managers to put out samples, whether it's the day before or even the day of, if a student wants to try some of it before actually selecting it. A lot of our managers will also, and we encourage this to, like, encourage the students to take the items. So for example, we offered tofu tacos for World Vegetarian Day a few weeks ago, and that's a scary thing, sometimes for our students to try.
Mmm, tasty.
It was really good.
Angie was looking pretty interested in those tofu tacos.
They were good.
A lot of salsa.
But, but you know, it's, it's a scary thing, right, when it's sitting next to their turkey and cheese sandwich that they're accustomed to. And so, we, we let them know that, look, take it. If you don't enjoy it, if it's not something that you want to eat, bring it back and then we'll let you select an additional entree. So we, we do it in a couple of different ways where we let them try out the food.
Great, yes. I think Tristi Minetto, unless it's the same question.
It's a little bit of a follow-up.
Sure, sure.
If I may.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Lovely idea of a student advisory council. How often do they get together? Or is it just as needed, or?
No, so we reach out to schools. So we've already started reaching out and having meetings with students. And we'll reach out to the administration and they, they kind of guide us, whether it's more appropriate for it to be a class, or like the student council at the school. We try to keep it to about a classroom size, though, just because, you know, just the taste testing and the timing. And then what we do is we, we run that through the first part of the year. And it typically even goes a little bit into the third quarter. And then we make a commitment to circle back. So in the fourth quarter of the year, we circle back and let them know, hey, this is what we were able to do. This is what we weren't able to do, and this is why. And last year, we were able to get back to almost all of our schools. I think there was like three of them that, because of scheduling, we weren't able. So we just sent a write-up to the coordinator, teacher that was helping us facilitate it. But we do try to kind of close that loop and follow up with them.
Thank you. That's something good to share. So as those comments come forward, just have them, you know, maybe speak with their office and so on, so that when you're putting together, when, when they're, you know, designating or volunteering students or whatever, that their student could be involved in it and so on. That's really, that's really good to hear. Thank you.
And anytime a school has, you know, wants to share feedback, I mean, that's the first thing we say, is can we sign you up for student advisory committee meeting? And so that's something that, please, if you, if you hear that feedback out in the schools, just let them know to contact us.
Awesome, thank you.
Tristi Minetto.
So the reason why we want to increase breakfast is so we know their little tummies are full, which directly helps their education, correct?
Correct, absolutely, right. They can't, they can't focus on learning if they're focused on being hungry.
Yeah. Tristi Cottrell.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to mention, a follow-up to Dr. Taylor's point, is that in our last board meeting, our student representative mentioned that there's a push in the student advisory council to have more site-based advisory councils, high school down elementary. So as schools get those going, those would be great opportunities to use those groups to help test food and give ideas.
Perfect, yeah. Dr. McNeil.
Just real quickly, for the breakfast in the classroom, I know you all have done a tremendous amount of work on that. Because when this program started eons ago, even when I was a principal, we had a lot of pushback because it was messy and time-consuming and it's taking away from academics. But I just want to send a kudos out to the entire team, because a lot of work has gone into that to streamline it for teachers and, and students. So that's a lot easier and it's just a part of the day. But it goes to that point, that the more students that we have eating breakfast, the better off that they're going to be in their learning. So thank you.
Thank you. I know one of the things we, we often get comments about is the apples that go uneaten and the, you know, fruit that goes uneaten. And just while we're having this conversation, if you could talk about some of the issues with regard to that and what you've done about, about that.
Sure. We, we hear a lot of that as well. So one of the main reasons that we serve a lot of apples and bananas at breakfast is because they do qualify for an entire cup of fruit, the size of it. And at breakfast, one of the regulations is that we must offer an entire cup of fruit.
Wow.
The alternative to that is, and what most school districts do, is they will offer, you know, a half a cup of some type of fruit and then a fruit juice. That's something that we just kind of try to work with our, you know, our school administration partner, you know, partners with, because they don't like a lot of liquid in the classroom. So we have to do milk, because it's also required. But when you add that extra liquid, especially with our little ones, they tend to kind of spill. Now, what we are doing and looking at is that we've actually allocated some of our commodity funds this year. We actually moved over more than double than what we did last year to a program called DOD Fresh, which is offered through the Department of Defense. And it allows us to utilize some of our commodity funds to get fresh fruits and vegetables. And so we're able to kind of curve some of that cost. And so just this week, for example, not necessarily at breakfast yet, but we're looking at implementing it, too. But we did like little snack-sized grape, prepackaged grape packages. And we're looking at some more, you know, the frozen berry cups. So fresh berries are difficult for us just because of, you know, cost and timing and distribution. But really looking at those frozen berry cups, the grapes, plums, pears, peaches. And so this, the DOD catalog is quite expansive. And so we have allocated... And so we have allocated more funds to that. And it's in this effort to provide a variety in our, especially in our fruit selection.
Good. And do health regulations preclude us from giving anything like to the homeless shelter? Because I know there are a lot of restrictions, but there seem to be fewer restrictions on donating food to, to homeless shelter. I just wondered if that's something you're, you know, what the rules are on that.
We, we are able to donate. We try to, you know, we also are constantly trying to look at our overall waste and trying to minimize that. But just for example, I mean, we had the, you know, the Run For Education event, which is a wonderful event. We just had that a couple of weeks ago.
And thank you, you guys were great, yeah.
Thank you. But you know, we get, and for that, we did have some donations come in. And so the excess that we had from that, we were able to donate to the food bank. And we typically do reach out first to our partners at the food bank. We do all of our vended meals through them.
Yeah.
And they already have kind of the distribution pipelines in place to supply some of the, you know, most needy. Right, so that's typically our first avenue that we take.
But I know, yeah, with the, with the apples, I know you have to provide the, the fruit. So it's not like you, there's something you can do to, to not provide it. But, you know, in the elementary schools, we just see the trash can with so many apples and, you know. And I just wondered if there's a way, you have to put something out there. So it sounds like you're working on what can we, what else can we put out there? But when, instead of a whole thing getting thrown away, I just, I, I hope we can find, and as you said, if it's food bank or wherever. But I, I know that makes a lot of parents crazy and we hear about it all the time and I know you do too.
I do. We did pilot as well this year, so we're kind of getting student feedback from it right now. Apple slices and an orange juice. And again, with those schools that were willing to kind of let us bring orange juice into the classroom. So it was a little bag of apple slices and then they got the orange juice and that met their full cup. So if we can gather some best practices and some kind of allies in that, we might be able to extend it.
Allies R Us. Okay, thanks. And I know that's a rabbit trail, but it's, it's one of those pain points that, you know, it just comes up so often. Okay, anything else on that? Otherwise we can go to lunch, I mean, go to the lunch participation. Oh, twice in every day, lunch in every day, bully.
Lunch is, you know, similar highlights and challenges to breakfast. Our, our participation is higher at lunch. We've been at about 40% over the past three years, just dipping slightly down to 39.9% last school year.
And I think you could be more precise. I think we should take it out to three decimal places, don't you? It's very vague, no, that's, we appreciate it, but 40% is close enough.
Right, we're about 40. And you can see the lunch meals have stayed a little bit more steady, right? We didn't see that big swing like we did at breakfast. Because we again had more delayed starts last year, not, you know, full-on school closures. This year for school year 1920, our target's 42%, so we're looking for a 2% gain there. And looking at again, same types of things, you know, new menu items and promotions to get the students excited. We actually do weekly promotions at our elementary school, whether it's highlighting a new menu item. We do, you know, like a Wacky Wednesday or we do breakfast for lunch. So we try to do fun things for them. And we still do our, what we call our fuel promotions at our middle and high schools, which is just, you know, kind of a fun new menu item that gets menued for two weeks straight for them to try. And if it's successful, then we put it in our regular rotation. So we still do all of those. And again, the same investments in equipment and technology for speed of service. That's one of the biggest things we hear is, you know, the lines are long. So trying to get them through as quickly as we can. The transition to the community eligibility provision helps with that as well because in those schools, it's a clicker system. So they're not necessarily having to wait at the point of sale.
Oh, great.
And that, that certainly helps get, get our, our students through a little quicker. Same challenges with the staff shortages, so that does create longer lines. You know, if we have, especially that a lot of our secondary, secondary schools have the snack bar kind of set up, the concession setup, which means you have to have somebody at every single window. And when you literally do not have the bodies stood in every window, a window gets closed, the line gets longer.
Yeah.
And, you know, lunchtimes as well, right? If we, if we have one meal period, two meal periods, you know, it makes a big difference in how long the lines are. We've also had recent success though, as transportation did with the job fair. So we, we held a hiring event as well. Great support from communications and HR for that event. We had over 80 attendance there, interviewed 54 and hired 40. So we are much, much better place than we were.
Wow.
When we went into that, we were at 56 vacancies.
That's great.
So, so, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's helping for sure, absolutely. Other challenges, I, I kind of alluded to this, but you know, limited meal service time, so one lunch versus two. And then, you know, if, if there's competitive sales in the schools, that can also be a challenge. So if there's a fundraiser going on that's around, you know, lunchtime, that could, that hurts the lunch participation for sure. Some things that we've done though, to try to increase our participation, we added a second barbecue so we can do more special events at elementary schools. That seemed to be a huge hit, you know, even more so the food truck is fun, but our elementary kiddos love those barbecues. And we can't get the food truck to the elementaries. It's hard, right? Because they can't go outside and we're trying to keep them. So this is a fun way to have a special event at an elementary school.
That's great.
And then still continuing with the student advisory committees and the same thing with the refreshes and system improvements at the central kitchen expansion.
Okay, great, great, all right. No questions, all right, great. And, and kudos on the job fair success. And I know you all, it's, it's much more of a science, this nutrition services stuff than people realize. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. There were, there was a time, a couple of years ago, when I believe it was the day when we had an all-day work session. We had, we, we ate food services lunch, you know, from the, and maybe sometimes the next time we have a session, we can have school lunch, you know, that same way.
Just the same food that the kids are eating.
Yeah, yeah, just so that we can talk about, you know, hey, we, you know, we've had it and those kinds of things, so.
We can do that on tofu taco Wednesday.
Well, no, I won't be here that day, whenever it is.
I know, yeah, it is delicious.
So, so the communications will be here for that day?
That's good.
Yes, but the board however, will be.
No, there are board members, yeah.
We can do it to Durkin.
The point is.
The point is, thank you so much. If that, if that's possible, just for, I think it's good for us to do that from time to time.
Yeah, and one of the things we've started doing, and hopefully you got to see it, we're trying to, along with whatever board meal is provided during the board meetings, just like a little sample of, hey, this is, you know, either one of our new menu items or like an old favorite. And so that's something that I've asked our catering team to start, you know, putting out there. And I believe they might have started with the mac and cheese.
Yeah, they put some, yeah, they put the mac and cheese and they, and today we have the hummus.
Okay, so.
Did you want to say something, Madam President?
I was just going to say that we have to wait till snack time to have the hummus. I'm very excited.
Boot camp, Katie, we need it, we need a snack time boot camp, Katie.
So we are trying to, and, and that's, you know, an opportunity for you all to also try the meals. And then we can have conversations, right? So I know that our catering team came back and they said, well, some people were saying maybe it needed a little bit more, you know, salt or seasoning. And I was like, well, you know, that's good because that opens the door to have the discussions, right? I mean, we have really strict sodium requirements. And sometimes that's, like, those are the issues we run into, but we don't want to, and we want to be very candid about it and have the discussions. And so we'll continue to, to do that and provide the samples at the board meetings.
We appreciate that, thank you. Dr. Taylor, did you have more? Okay, Dr. McNeil.
I was just going to say, I mean, you know, Pete alluded to it, but you know, yesterday in our leadership team, we talked about ACT scores and we can't do the work that we do without these folks sitting right here. And these are some of the rock stars in our school district. And there's people behind them as well that do this work every single day. So I want to send a huge thank you out to Pete and Adam and Leanka and Rick. You guys are just dynamite at what you do, so thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great, excellent, okay. Well, thank you from all of us, what, sorry?
I just have one more real, yeah, it's, it's a brand new metric, so it'll be really quick. And, but we're, we're going to start tracking, we've been gathering student feedback, but we're actually going to be tracking it now so that we can provide some numbers and have some targets. So this year, we are, for 1920, looking at serving at least 10% of our student population, which is, you know, it's, it's a hefty lift. However, we are, we've reached out to our partners in communications to see if we can utilize, you know, some of their expertise in their databases with emails and things like that to maybe send some surveys out, continue to partner with student IT classes. That's typically where we do our other surveys in our secondaries. We reach out to teachers and see if they'll just let us do a quick five-minute survey. And then we're also looking at investing in a meal app that has an immediate survey.
Great.
Capability, so students can just log in and, and provide the feedback kind of right, just in time.
And we have our new mobile app that communications is working on. We can push out information about some of the cool things that, yeah, that are going to be happening. Good. Okay.
Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Just while you're here, Leanka, just want to thank you again on behalf of all of us for, for the way you jumped in on Teacher Appreciation Week, to help make some things happen, to, to get donations as well as to help process some that came in, so they can leave them at your place and your, and your team got them out to all the schools, so we get to do the ice cream out there and so on, and the little candies. So thank you, thank you for your, for your help with that. It was, it was amazing, it was amazing, just to, just to be able to have a good, a great week for the teachers and, and what your team did to help make that happen, we really appreciate it.
Very good, thanks. Yeah, you are wonderful partners in every event that we do and Run For Ed was just an example. And that was quite a crowd to put through a couple of lines all at the same time and it was orderly and everybody was happy, so thank you. Okay, great, all right. We are, let's see, on to Ms. Lightfoot. And Ms. Payne.
Oh.
No, that's fine, that's good for you.
Good afternoon.
Oh, hold on a second. I'll get you some more seats. There we go.
It's because they've had too much tofu for lunch.
Boy, we take, we take a line and we just beat it to death, don't we? Anything worth doing is worth overdoing.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good afternoon for the record. Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. I'm joined by Lisa Marie Lightfoot, Volunteer Services Coordinator. And we're here to talk about volunteers, which is 3.4.1. And we've got some good news to share with you. So when we talked, when we last came in front of you, we talked about the challenges we were facing around the change in, just, just the, just the work that was coming out of the legislature and the changes around the requirements for volunteers and how we felt that really would impact on the number of volunteers. So we, Lisa Marie and I lobbied for, let's maintain the 17, 18 figure. And let's just maintain it and let's see how we get on. And then the 17, 18 figure was 11,722 volunteers in the Washoe County School District.
Is that unduplicated?
That, yes. And actually, there is probably more than that because there's a lot of parents and families who volunteer that don't come through Lisa Marie's team, so.
That is just amazing.
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing, yeah. It is. So the, the really good news is, and this is huge kudos to the team, is that they managed to increase the number of volunteers by 8%. So we went from what we thought would be a struggle to maintain the 11,700 to 12,670. And a lot of that has been done because the team have been working with groups, so church groups, nonprofits, and bringing in groups of folks to work on one specific project. So that could be a church group deciding to paint the inside of Green Beret or, and, and that's the kind of projects that the team have been working on. And then they've also spent some time, and I think Emily mentioned Joan Nanini at the UNR, and working with UNR on practicum students in terms of trying to increase that pipeline and facilitate that pipeline so that we get, it's, so it becomes very easy to place practicum students in our schools. And probably about, I don't know, within the last 12 months, I reached out to the area superintendents and said, can you help us with this? Can you just spread the word about how useful, how helpful it is to have practicum students in, in the schools? And that really pay dividends. So it's, it's a great example of teams coming together for the benefit of our children. So with all that being said, so we've had a, a really good year, but there are certainly some challenges coming up in the next 12 months. When we look to our goal in the future, there are some challenges. And not least, and this is the big one, is the upcoming reduction in workforce in volunteer services. So it's going to be a, a year of transition as we look at the team and we look at the team without the volunteer services coordinator position. And you may or may not remember, but that position became obsolete as part of the 40 million budget deficit, budget cuts we had. And I, you know, I'm sure we both remember, all, we all remember those conversations we had around that. So we will be using the opportunity to refocus and we look at core activities that relate to volunteer services. We, the team do some, provide some services that could be argued it's not core to the mission, so we will be using the opportunity to look at that. And then just one other challenge is that there has been more changes to the requirements around being a volunteer in the Washoe County School District. And it's to the benefit, so they're, you know, they're good changes and we're, we're very appreciative of the work that went in to, to allowing those changes to happen. But, you know, with any change, there, there is understanding and a real piece of communication around it. So the team have been communicating those changes. And I do think there will be some impact around that as well. So as I said, all that being said, I'm really hoping that we are able to maintain what we've actually achieved this year, so the 12,620 volunteers. I'm, my, I'm going to be working or we're all going to be working very hard to maintain that figure going forward. So Lisa Marie and I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is that your 1920 target?
Yes, it is.
The 1260?
Yeah, yeah, that's our goal going forward, yeah.
Well, thank you, and Lisa Marie, thank you and your great team for the wonderful support you provide to our, our staff and our students. That, that is just remarkable.
It is.
12,620 people, so I know that represents, every single one of those people represents a relationship that you and your team have and so.
And that's the key relationships.
Is there anything you wanted to add or share with us?
No, I, I can say that Joan Nanini's been just awesome with the practicum students. We work together to, I said, you know, I can market these a lot better if they're not just sitting in the back of the classroom taking notes. So he's fully supportive. So, he's fully supportive of everybody coming into the school as a practicum student, doing hands-on work with the teacher.
Right.
So, we could market him more as teacher's assistants.
Excellent.
And I'm really, the results from this year so far have just been amazing. The schools are so receptive and they're so kind and the administrators get back to me so quickly and, "Yeah, we'll take two or three."
That's great.
It's been really, really a wonderful experience. And we streamlined, we got a master list, so we don't, it's easier for them to keep track of who's screened and not screened, so that part's been really good.
Good.
And I think we have to give a shout-out to school police and fingerprinting. I mean, the changes we've seen over the last couple of years have, you know, they've challenged us all.
Yes.
Lots of, lots of folks in lots of different ways dealing with volunteers, and it's been super helpful, just what a team, how everyone comes together and really, you know, comes together for the benefit of our children. So, it's just wonderful to see from area superintendents to, you know, school police and fingerprinting. So, we appreciate, we appreciate everybody.
That's great.
Trustee Raymond, too, I wanted to let you know that we did, we not, we didn't just contact them once. I think we've been contacting the schools weekly, but at least two or three times, we've had one-on-one contact with everyone. And some schools, you know, they're much more flexible and they're able to adapt the changes very quickly, but others, we're still getting calls and making sure they're okay, but it's been helpful.
Good. Well, I have, I have a possibility I was discussing with Mr. Etchart the other day when we were at the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Press Conference. Pete was mentioning that there is a, with the national, I think it's through the benchmarking with the Council on Great City Schools, they had sent out a survey about the use of crossing guards at schools, and we don't have them.
We used to have that program, too.
Yeah, and I was saying, you know, "I bet there are a lot of retirees who would be able to help us with that in the future." Just as a function of our community interest in safety for our children, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking maybe that's something I'll do in my retirement, to take on trying to put together a pedestrian safety volunteer crossing guard initiative at our schools, because it's a, it's got, it's got opportunity and I know there are people out there that would do it.
Yeah, there definitely are. They had a whole team a few years back.
Yeah, so something to put in our...
Parent Patrol, that's right.
We, we used to call them lollipop men and women, because they have...
That was in another country, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
We never had those.
That was a different zip code.
This was going to be a cultural moment, you know?
I know. Here we are, we're not being very inclusive and diverse, are we?
We have an interesting program that I...
I'm calling myself out.
I would love to reach out to you about, Casey Edgington, the kindergarten coordinator. We're working on a program where we have storytelling, and that's not reading a book, but the storytelling is very exciting.
That's great.
And it's a great thing if you know anybody that you would want to refer. It's only a, like, one-hour commitment once a month at the minimum, so...
That's great.
It'd be great. And she said it has a lot of value. It's modeled after a Boston program that we're looking at.
Wonderful.
And then, we're also working on an ambassador program where we're gonna really recruit parents to come in and give them kids for transitioning into kindergarten, so...
Excellent.
Yeah. And that would be my only comment. I would hope that you, as you go through with your challenges, that probably not something I've been very good at, but letting you know that, you know, volunteers can do anything. And we worked really hard on that white paper about 10 years ago to, you know, create a model where you had people, resources to support teachers and students that, you know, didn't cost the district anything, and that's still a viable option, I think.
It is, and thank you for all of the great work in that regard.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mathers. Not to be confused with the other Mathers, never mind, leave it to Beaver, you know?
Okay.
Before your time, before your time.
So, we have...
It's bad when I sit this long in my place, stuff just comes out of my head.
A little punchy, are we?
Okay, Mr. Mathers.
So, we have two metrics. The first one, there's a little bit of a story here. I think we've talked about it a little bit before, but we, this metric has to do with receiving Meritorious Budget Award from either GFOA, or we recently changed it to the American Society of School Business Officers. And we received the award in 1617, and this was the standard GFOA budget award that, Madam President, you're probably familiar with. And we think that award makes lots of sense. It's a good housekeeping, kind of an award that ensures that your budget has all the elements that the Government Finance Officers Association thinks are appropriate. But as I think we've talked about before, they changed that award for schools in 1718, and it's now less of a checklist of required elements than a prescriptive checklist of processes to utilize when preparing a budget, which sounds reasonable, except that that award and those processes are geared towards when you have a little bit of extra money and you're deciding how to use it. And so, we don't fit into that box, which creates a problem. We, though, attempted to get the award, and I gotta tell you, the sheer number of hours to go through the documentation of those processes, I just can't justify it.
No.
Given everything else we have to do. So, we did receive a, what they call a certificate for path to the award, so we're on our way to getting the award. But we got that notification very late in the fiscal year, and so we really weren't able to utilize that assessment in applying for the award this year. So, we didn't. I mean, I made the judgment call, it's not worth the hours, we don't have feedback yet from the GFOA on it, so we did not apply for the award. We are working on the ASBO award, but for 1920, I have to say, I would recommend eliminating this metric. I think there's lots of financial metrics we could have, and I don't want to bore you with all of them, all of those possibilities, but I think to really give you a better sense of how we're doing financially, I don't think this gives you that sense. And so, for 1920, I would be more inclined to do a measure, something along the lines of the variance between our general fund revenue estimates and actuals. And same thing, our variance between our general fund expense estimates and actuals. And so, the background to that is, we have spent a lot of time over the last year to improve how we make our estimates during the fiscal year. And although that hasn't been very transparent to you, it's something we've tried to improve upon, work out, work through, and I think we're to a point where, you know, we can start sharing that information so that the board or others can get an early warning system on where do we stand in terms of revenues and expenses. And then, I think we can, I think we're comfortable now in assessing how we do in terms of making those estimates. So, that would be one example of a different metric that I'd like the board to consider, rather than a budget award where, again, there's hundreds of hours putting together a budget document. But frankly, people don't look at budget documents anymore like they used to 20 years ago. So, we put scores of hours into a document that, you know, is useful for the public if they choose to read it, but most people don't choose to read it.
Mark, is bond rating one of our metrics?
It isn't, but there's another one. It could be. There's really lots of financial metrics we could use, and that would be a great one.
It is independently arrived at, too, so...
Yeah.
And if you did variances, so, you would be attempting to say, like, you know...
Plus or minus 5%.
Okay, or we're at 97%? Yeah.
Yeah, because, again, I mean, I think, you know, you probably had a sense sometimes of, "Wow, budget versus actual, there's a big gap there." And we've done a lot of work to try to narrow that gap between budgets and actuals, and it's really important to, when you get it down to a certain level, to do regularly, regular monthly estimates, which is what we do, monthly estimates of where we think we'll end up. I probably wouldn't want to share anything but quarterly, but still, having an early warning system about, "Well, revenues are dropping, what do we do?" You know, those kind of things, I think, is a good practice that, again, we've been honing over the last nine to 12 months. But again, debt rating, you know, our credit rating would be another great one. There's, there really are a lot of metrics that I think are more meaningful than this one.
I just, you know, with regard to variances, it is possible to drive unintended consequences with that.
Well, sure.
Because if we're, if one of our metrics is to be within 3% of our expected expenditures, and we could have been, you know, 7% below, I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing it out, we, you know, we want to think about what's the best way to get at that, but I agree with you, the receipt of the award is not the best metric we could have, so... Yeah, but I know you'll bring us back something good.
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on that, other discussion? Okay, all right.
And then, our second metric, you know very well, and this is to achieve a balanced budget. And as you all know, in 2018, you put a policy into place to balance the budget within three years. We balanced it within two.
Yay!
And, and so, yeah, we were well ahead of where we should have been as of this fiscal year. And for next fiscal year, we want to continue to have that metric and make sure we, again, stay balanced. You know, another possible metric that goes along with this is our fund balance percentage. And so, you've set also at the same time that target balance policy in the general fund of 8% to 10%, we're smack dab in the middle, as you'll hear in a couple of weeks. But that's another really important metric that we need to watch, so...
And kudos to everybody. I, you know, I, I almost hesitate to be so cheerful about balancing the budget because it has included such pain. It has been such a painful process, so much lost in the $63 million that had to be eliminated out of the general fund budget. So, I compliment everyone on the work to get us there, because it is really important, and the public has responded really well to that elimination of the deficit. Another one of those things we committed to that we have delivered on. But it's not without great pain, and we always have to remind those who are listening that it was a tremendously difficult process that had true costs to our staff and our students that we're going to be living with for a while to try to, to try to recover from, so... But it was a great, great job. We asked you to do it, and the organization did it, and it is, you know, everybody's to be commended for that, the sacrifices that have been made. Okay, anything on that? So, your goal is for 1920 is zero?
Yes, it is. Continues to be zero.
Okay, all right. And we'll have our work cut out for us to do that, too. Okay, and thanks for serving on that Commission on School Funding. I'm glad you're there, I'm glad we're at the table. What was that comment we heard? If you're not at the table, you're on the menu? Okay, thank you, Mark, and thank you to your team. Okay, trustee visits. I've gotta go. No, I'm just kidding.
Is this mine?
This is yours.
This is yours, that's right. I was looking around for Sam or somebody. Who's, you know, is Vangie gonna do this one? O'Neal.
They just stayed from sitting so long.
Yeah.
He had a tie on it, whatever.
Ooh! Ooh! Tough crowd.
Wow, people get punchy when...
When hummus is waiting.
Yeah.
Homemade hummus.
Or office, whatever.
Yeah. So, we just missed 100%, which was our goal, 'cause of Beasley Elementary School didn't have been visited.
Oh, no!
So, I don't know what to say.
That was in 1819?
Yeah.
Not in my district.
What happened was, though, I think it was a transition in trustees, so...
Yes, yeah.
So, we will make sure we get 100. That's our goal, and I know you all do it. Is there anything else I can add?
Yeah, this isn't really on you.
Yeah.
This is on us.
So...
And I know trustees are making a great effort, and I also know the staff is making a great effort to keep us organized and to make sure we're getting around everybody. It is, and there is no reason why we can't. We have two trustees for every school, so there is no reason why we can't get to 100% of our schools at least once. Yeah.
The interim did ask me to remind you that when you visit schools, to let us know so we can keep track for...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Vice President Raymond.
I think, I'm just thinking for this year, I know with the superintendent's visits, I'm trying to tag on to those so that we're not, I know a lot of people are, but if there could be a check-in, I guess, or something, 'cause I, I felt personally, I don't, maybe I'm the only one, that I didn't want to add on a bunch of visits for just myself, one-on-one, when the superintendent was maybe gonna be going within a month or two, but now, you know, with scheduling, I just, if we could get a kind of a check-in, maybe in January after the winter break, about kind of where we are.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Because I've been trying to be cautious not to overwhelm the schools, but don't want to get to March and ESBC testing and realize that, you know, four of my schools are still, haven't been to, and try to, well, more than four would be harder, but, you know, that's all I've seen.
I'll have a spreadsheet or something produced where we're at. Does that work?
That's great.
Okay. Yeah.
By trustee, it would be great, yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Neil. Okay. All right, so, that is the end of our, of our plan for today. Do we have any public comment on any of those metrics? All right, and we did, we did provide, we did provide direction along the way, so thank you trustees for the great conversation. Vice President Raymond.
Yeah, and I just have another request, I guess, for this presentation, and then, I think we do this again in, like, April. That summary spreadsheet that lists all of the goals and then has the columns for the actual and then the target, and then there, it's color-coded based on whether we achieved, met, whatever, the green. If we could, and it's not a big deal that we didn't have it today, but I just find that, for me visually, the easiest way to, like, consume that information, and so if we could get that, you know, in the next two or three weeks for this session, and then have it for the next one, I think that was a very useful document.
Okay, and President Simon Holland and I had had that discussion, and the color coding, so I just want to be clear, the color coding for that was relegated to the superintendent's evaluation. So, we can go ahead and do that color coding, but it won't have the, it'll be on the target being met, but it will not be relegated to the meets, the exceeds, and those types of things, as far as that, so I just want to be clear.
Are we all collectively on track?
Looking at it on the, from the last time, it, every single one was color-coded, whether it was part of the...
Eval or not.
Eval, yeah. It was, yeah. So, I think it's just, if we can keep doing that, that'd be great.
Yeah, very helpful.
In front of us when we got there.
Yeah, very, very helpful.
We'll most certainly put the, so I've been going down, and I know President Simon has, but we have a list of all the targets for 1920, so we'll add the 1920 targets, and I think we'll, on that spreadsheet, I'd like to see the operational definition on the spreadsheet as well, and then also on the, on the slides as well, too.
That's great.
This was a different type of visual presentation, shall we say?
Okay.
And we have some work with our communications team on that as well. I went out of the box and, with the logo.
Love it.
And I know, I know I'm getting the, I know I...
Props to Ben, who was the mountain guy.
It was props to Ben, and I took Ben's heat, so...
It's not the branding, though, hard.
Yes, indeed, consistency of branding.
So, but I also want to send a shout-out to Vangie. She designed the actual slide presentation so that it was more around the work and what was happening, but we'll definitely stretch out to have the 1920 target and then the operational definition of the targets as well.
That's great, that's great. Thank you. Did Scott rejoin us? Okay, just wanted to give him an opportunity to weigh in if he was there. Council made a great suggestion that we take action to approve the direction and the changes that we have suggested, so if we could have a motion to that effect. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
As you look at me, can we have a motion?
Well, you were reaching for your microphone.
It was simultaneous. I knew it was coming. No, I'd like to move that...
No, I'd like to move that, that, I moved that the Board of Trustees, that the direction provided during the discussion from the Board of Trustees be shared with the superintendent for appropriate action with staff. The interim superintendent for appropriate action with staff.
Okay. Second by trustee Minetto. Is there any further discussion? And certainly that, that means that if something was unclear, that you'll come back to us and, and we'll, this is a, this is a dialogue, it's a dynamic process, and we're very grateful. And I just want to thank the staff, again, under discussion, for their willingness to be bold and to, and to have this collaborative discussion about our collective responsibility to our students and our district and our community. We need to take a vote. Do you want to add something else before we?
Mine's just a question of clarity, so I can wait till after the vote.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. So just for clarity, we're going to have the same present, the layout of the presentation will be the same with the operational definition. And then as a handout for us, we'll have the legal size, color-coded situation with the operational definition as well.
And you'll have the spreadsheet. So for this presentation, you'll have the spreadsheet in about two to three weeks.
And in addition, we'll have the spreadsheet.
And then in April, when we come back again for the other metrics,